Good evening and welcome to the February 12, 2020 meeting of the Milton Select Board. We're going to items three and four. Item two is going to be deferred items three and four executive session, so we're going to go into executive session and then we will return to open session. So I will move to go into exec-- to enter executive session to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, specifically the Kidder Library, believing that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board, and to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual pursuant to general laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A1. And we will be returning to open session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
We will go into executive session. I hope we will be back at about 7:15. Thank you. Good evening, and we are returning to open session. Sorry for the delay. We'd hoped to make it back by 7:15, but things took a little longer than anticipated. So, we will go to item five, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us as we recite this Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for that. Item six, public comment. And we are going to have a public comment for specifically the airplane issue, but anyone can come and make a public comment if they wish now. Seeing none? Seeing none. We will go on to item seven. Item seven is the Airplane Noise Information and Listening Session. This item is on the agenda because last November 14, we said we'd have an update in late January. And we thought we might have an update in late January. And on January 22, this board decided to devote the beginning of this meeting for an update on infr-- oh, all right. An update on information and a question and answers on the airplane issue. So we're going to conduct this as a public hearing, as we attempted to do back in November, and we've done in other instances as well. And the essence of that is, we're going to try to give everyone the equal opportunity to be heard. Timeframe's a little bit limited tonight, but we're going to have hopefully another one of these with our Chair of the ANAC in the next couple of months. And the other aspect of this is, as the Chair, I am presiding, and all comments should be directed to the Chair, and then I will send them around to whomever might provide the answers to that. That's the way we run the public hearings. On November 14, I was a little bit lax with that procedure, and I let people shut out questions and interrupt speakers. Some of the attendees were unhappy with that, and I think they were right. So we're going to pay a little more attention to that orderly procedure tonight. Let me preface our discussion with this. If this board had the power to restore pre-ARNAV dispersion over Milton and to mandate getting gear down closer to Logan and not over Milton, among other things, this board would do it tomorrow. Unfortunately, as we all know, the board does not have that power. The board does not control the skies over Milton. That power rests with the FAA. What we've done and what we've continued to do is to try to get the FAA to use its power to ease the burden on those suffering in Milton. To that end, what we've been doing before and in the last few months is to make clear to our congressional representatives, Congressman Lynch, Congresswoman Presley, Senators Warren and Markey, that addressing the suffering caused by the FAA's use of the sky over Milton is the number one issue for this town on the federal level. And our congressional representatives have responded. Over the last several months, they have been pressing the case with the FAA for dispersion and for more information. Just last week, members of Congress, our congressional representatives, joined by many others, pressed the case for installation of vortex generators with the major airlines, similar to what JetBlue had done. And so, I think we are getting help from our congressional representatives. They are limited in what they can do, but they are-- the issue is of moment with them, and I think they're doing the best they can on it. For us, what we've been doing on the state level the last several months is to make our case for dispersion with the MIT study group, and we've been able to do that, at least in writing, and we hope for follow-up beyond that. So Tom Doherty's going to-- our MCAC rep is going to give an update. Kitty Carlin will give a brief update on ANAC. Our ANAC Chair was unable to be here tonight, but he wanted us to go forward, and we will have a session with him in the next couple of months, and we'll have questions then as well. So, Mr. Doherty.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Good evening. So I'm going to start with the 4L, a notification of an environmental assessment. That came out in December, and it's a kickoff notice that was received and published it on the town's website to conduct an environmental review. Now, back in 2015, there had been a commitment, and there was a preliminary look at it. And the preliminary look, as it says, the noise analysis for the permanent use of a procedure did not result in a reportable or significant noise impact over residential areas. That's what they said back then, that they committed, nevertheless, that is to say, FAA, to take a look further. Now, the affected communities is important, and I want to say this once and clearly. Those stakeholders that the FAA sent the notice to are the affected communities, including, of course, Milton and Dorchester and Matapan and Hyde Park. And it's not an MCAC. I am the representative for Milton of the Massport Community Advisory Committee, but this is a direct involvement of the communities themselves in response to the environmental assessment, and consequently, the communities have a direct role. Sure, MCAC can help as a conduit of information, which is also going to come directly, but that's a big issue. That's an important opportunity. Here's what I'm going to go through. The environmental assessment slides that were presented on January 9 to the MCAC public meeting, there are only a few. They're not particularly informative, but I'll go through those. And because they weren't particularly informative, and because the person who was supposed to be coming to actually provide detail, I found out in advance was not coming, I prepared seven written questions, and I handed those to the regional administrator that day, and she answered them promptly, and I'll go through those, which are, I think, informative. I'm going to therefore also go through a related environmental review that was done in 2017. To go back a step, the commitment to do this environmental assessment was made in 2015. In 2017, Runway 4R was under reconstruction. So for temporary purposes, the 4R planes were diverted over 4L. That provided a wonderful opportunity to see how it is that that impact, that environmental impact, was assessed. But you'll see that the summary that was provided was just that, two summaries. So I followed up on that again after, at the time of this earlier announcement I just pointed you to, and said, "That's not enough, and I'll show you what we did with that." Lastly, let me just go forward. What I did about that was to say, "Look, your summary's not enough. I need the non-published appendix." Then I got it, and I'm going to show you. And it's, I believe, a roadmap for what they may be thinking about, how they model what they do in this assessment. Next, I think it would be appropriate and helpful for the communities to have their own expert, because of the way in which the model is sophisticated and the expert, for example, that I've interviewed at the recommendation with Steve Tabor, who's a very expert aviation lawyer out in California, contacted Steve, I said, "Who's the best?" He pointed to CSDA Design in California, who were very helpful in District of Columbia, Phoenix, and LAX. So I think, and I'll show you an excerpt, because again, with this public session, I want to introduce the topic, but I don't, nevertheless, want, you know, FAA looking over our shoulders and saying, "Well, what's this working group going to do?" I'm going to introduce what they might be able to do. They might be able to hire their own expert. I've looked, and as an individual, not an MCAC rep, I've asked about what the cost of that might be, what the particulars of the modeling might be. I'll talk about that. Next, if you were here in November, I talked about the 40% of the noise of approaching planes, once the gear is down, comes from the gear. And when does the gear go down? It goes down at the discretion of the pilot. It's supposed to go down no later than five miles from the airport, the final fix. But in fact, we see the gear going down from Blue Hills all the way in, 10 miles. I'm going to talk about that. And lastly, what we need. There are several things we need for a working group to be formed of volunteers, preferably led by some one or more people under 4L, because of, as you'll see, some of the dynamics there. Okay, so let's go forward. Here's the FAA slides. You'll notice it's a proposed Boston FAA public ARNAV GPS runway 4L public. There is a JetBlue private procedure that's been utilized for years, but this would be an overlay over that essentially. And on the right, there's a plane, but there's no noise, so I don't think it's particularly representative of our condition. There we go. The agenda that they presented, what's the purpose? What was the history? There's going to be an environmental assessment, environmental assessment, and a schedule. That schedule's important because we've got some work to do. They said, you know, the purpose, and you look at the dots there, increase the safety of the aircraft, reduce arrival delays. Well, that could increase throughput. Conform to their ARNAV procedure desires. Yes, but that concentrates flights, as we know. Reduce the air traffic control workload. But the problem every time FAA says that is some of the other alternatives that we would like to have perceived utilize air traffic control. So that mandate isn't necessarily one that is resident-friendly. All right. A permanent implementation. So then they presented there, and I've already talked about it, 2015 was the initiation. Next, there were no reportable significant results initially, and they committed to an assessment. And then, in September, they started, they ordered a contract, ROVOLUS. ROVOLUS is the name of the entity that they awarded the contract to. It's in Dallas. They assigned an FAA person to be in charge of this. He's in San Antonio. He didn't even come. I'm not criticizing him. He couldn't, but he did not even come to the January meeting. October kickoff. And the most important thing is right there. Once they get going, there's only a 30-day public comment period, and any number of cities or communities near airports have missed the opportunity to challenge an EA, Environmental Assessment, because the 30-day comment period and, you know, taking up issues of past before they could react. So we've got to be mindful of that, and that is going to occur sometime July, August, September. So there's time. Now, they say they want to have two public workshops during that third quarter. And I said on January, and most recently after that, "No. We want to have a workshop before they issue their tentative results so that we can provide input, not just simply 30-day time limit for reaction." And we want our own experts. So that's going to require some work between now and July, so we get out ahead of the issue. And then they're going to prepare a final EA 2020. Okay. Then they add this slide, but I'm going to skip past it because they said, "Oh, it's incorrect. It's from 2015, outdated." Okay, thank you. All right. So now, next, the questions and the environmental review, as I think, you know, that's my effort to provide some better information. The first is just a technical one, so I'll just pass by it. It was, you know, why was the JetBlue procedure suspended on the notice? They call it NOTAM, Notice to Airmen. It should be Notice to Pilots, men and women. It's just a technical change in the terminology, so I don't want to dwell on that. Look at the next yellowed line. The 4L Blue ARNAV procedure will be analyzed only in the cumulative impact section of the EA. In other words, they're going to look at, as they say under question two, just skip down there for a minute, will the baseline for the noise comparison be conditions prior to that JetBlue path that's been in there? In other words, on a clear day before they concentrated the JetBlue? Answer, no. They're going to be looking after the JetBlue path, at least in terms of their view, from November to October. November of 2018 to October 2019. So, yes, they say, to the extent that there are impacts, we'll take into account cumulative impacts. But I was saying, hey, wait. I want to understand why you can't have a baseline on a clear com day against which you then measure things. So we're going to have to, you know, address that. And they say the environmental analysis scope only involves the proposed ARNAV GPS runway 4L. They're not looking back at the visual path itself. They're taking that as given. Will the noise metrics other than DNL be used? And if you know, as many of you know, DNL, that's a 65-decibel over-the-year average day and night, which is very un-resident-friendly. It's a very high standard that's difficult to deal with. And the answer was, they don't intend to use anything other than DNL, and that was an expected response. So they do say, "Well, we could supplement that if there were noise-sensitive areas that might suggest that we should." Well, residential areas are defined to be noise-sensitive, so it's a bit of a circle. So they start with, "Yes, but..." But the "but" is circular. So that's something, again, we're going to need to think about, and that's why I think we need to be looking at the noise model itself, which I'll come to. Does the noise model use gear down at 10 miles from the final approach fix? You know, the Blue Hills, not MILTT, is the waypoint for 4R down at Granite Avenue. And the answer is, as you see, well, for the proposed ARNAV GPS runway 4L approach, the final fix is five miles runway. That's about right. And the intermediate fix is 10 miles runway. That's out the Blue Hills. And then they say, "Well, the landing gear will, the threshold, the profiles, I'm sorry, in the model, are expected to have the landing gear extended at a point between the five miles and the 10-mile threshold." Okay, but 90% at five and 10% at 10. What's the model going to use, and how are we going to address that? And I'll show you in a bit. Next, will the closely spaced parallel runways, 4R and 4L, which are together and are close, and create a sandwich of noise, will they be taken into account, inclusive of the other 4L path realities? That's my question. Answer, at the airport. Let me, I mean, if this is not a typographical error, that's not our point. Our point is, as experienced by the residents, and we'll have to address that. You know, it's in the communities on approach, not at the airport, right? Will economic justice criteria be assessed, given the Blue Hill, Matapan, and Dorchester over flights, they asked? Answer, yes. And we'll come to what environmental impact, environmental justice, economic justice means. Okay? So these are initial questions. Initial answers, it gives a heads-up as to some things that they're going to do that we need to follow up on. And so, what I did was, I said, "Wait a minute. In 2017, we have a happy fact, which is, they temporarily had to deal with reconstruction of 4R," they said, "and," you'll see right there, "they were looking at," yep, "they were looking at two temporary approach procedures, and the first of those is what we're talking about, which is an ARNAV approached to runway 4L. Okay? As well as a step where you'd come, the plane would come down 4R and then step over. I don't want to talk about the sidestep. So this could be a potential roadmap. And you'll see, this will all be posted, so you can read all of it if you want. You'll see that, they say, "Has the airspace modeling been conducted?" Yes, it's in Attachment 1. Thank you. And is there a summary and some further information on the modeling? Yes, it's in Attachment 2, but it's not attached, not public. No, don't worry. Currently, runway 4L does not have any approach procedure that authorizes the use of an instrument guidance system during low ceiling visibility conditions. Yes and no. There was a private, special JetBlue procedure, which isn't a public procedure, but that's -- I can understand that they're being, you know, literal. Will there be actions affecting changes in aircraft flights between the hours of 10 at night and 7:00? No. The next one is odd, though. Is a preferential runway use program presently in effect for the affected airports? Well, there's a 33L, there is a preference for the use of 33L in certain conditions for arrivals late. So it's odd that they checked no. Here's the proposed project primarily designed for visual flight, et cetera. It's IFR. It's ARNAV. Okay, so let's keep going. Then they say noise analysis summary, and I just put an arrow there. Essentially, they're saying, for many different reasons, under their high threshold, there's no noise effect that we can see at this initial time, and we're going to go ahead and don't see a noise effect. Okay? Will the proposed project introduce air traffic over noise-sensitive areas not now affected? No. Well, the catch-22 is, it's going to concentrate to some extent in areas that are already affected. So it's not introducing, but it's going to increase over the west part of Milton and Matapan, et cetera. This project has not expected to affect air quality. Thank you. All right. So then you come to the appendices, the attachments, and they're not there. So I requested them, and on February 3, I received them. The standards, each of these, the standards, the modeling, the flight tracks, and the environmental impact justice. And I believe this is a roadmap, and I'm very glad that they responded both to my questions and to this follow-up. And that is, here's Attachment, oops. Sorry. Here's Attachment 1. There's the ARNAV 33S path. These are the waypoints. This is, you'll see that it's to the west of 4R. You'll see the reference to the waypoints in the final fix at five miles and the VRON, the intermediate fix at about 10 miles. Here's 4R GPS, a little bit to the east, and MILTT is the final fix. And now, the modeling. Okay, first, there's a summary, but I think we can get right to this. So the new approach has its own, of course, waypoints. And you'll see, for internal use only, and you'll see this in the rest. Now, they're going to publish this now that they've provided it, you know, to me, to us. They're going to put this on their website with the other. All right, there's the runways which we all know at Logan. Here's the thread. This is the narrow path with its fixes, and here is a, I put my own yellow square on the top. This is interesting because this is the radar tracks reassigned to the narrow channel. You can see a bit of a difference there between the huge gray areas and the thin line. And they're modeling the noise of the one compared to the other. Again, internal use only. This is 4R. And now, this is important. This is important. Here's the methodology that they used then, and they're using the same methodology now. Again, you see that what they say is they're going to take these days, 28 days, and they list the days they took. And that's 23,803 flights, and they're going to use the noise impact measured on the DNL basis of those days, right? That's what they did then. They're going to do the same thing now, as I mentioned earlier, for November 1, 2018 to October 31, 2019, right? Same methodology. So this gives us, I think, a heads-up. Oops, let me see. Another thing. Yeah, it shows how the baseline is built. That's fine. Oh, yes. I love it. The analysis does not take into account terrain. So the model just simply assumes you're in Nevada. And as we know, Blue Hills are about 650 feet high, and the airport is 19 feet above sea level. And so in between there, you can reduce from the flight level some amount, but their model doesn't do so. That may have an impact, it may not, but it's something to, you know, be watching for. This, the baseline arrival traffic, this is essentially showing at what altitude, and I'll show you in a second here, we'll back up there. So the red is up to three, it is below 3,000 feet, and the yellow is up to 10,000 feet. And so you'll see a significant part, oh, that's wrong, a significant part, there we go, a significant part of what they're trying to do is 3,000 feet and under, you know, subtract also the height of the journey. Next, the scenario. This may be, these two may be the most important. So the baseline scenario, when they looked at it back then, it's hard to see, but in there, not the gray, this color here, that's yellow. That's the yellow, and we'll see what the yellow means in a second. Here. 60 to 65 decimal of. Okay? So it's not above 65 in their analysis. That's the baseline. Then, the alternative means the ARNAV, the 33L ARNAV. There's very little change. There's no, essentially, there's a little bit of change in the shape, but no change in the decimal level. So, again, 60 to 65. So it tells you, for internal use only again, it tells you the uphill battle. It really, to me, suggests that it's a challenge to the noise model, and to see whether or not the noise model can be challenged and understood, first of all, and then challenged in terms of what it assumes, in terms of gear down, in terms of terrain, or any other So, let me just keep going, and then I'll come back in a second. This one is hard to read, so there's a, right below, there's a better one, right here. So, I don't know if you can see, but you see the yellow circles? The yellow circles, that's again, 60 to 65. The only time it gets red is right up there near the airport, so that this is a different rendition of the same analysis suggesting that when they ran this, when they had to reconstruct one runway and running a noise model on 4L, they were not finding something that would create a so-called significant noise impact. And we need to, using the model, as I said, which is why I contacted that and come to a mentor consultant who's familiar with the model. Same thing here, a little clearer there, and you can see the red a little better. Okay? The last two would simply have to do with the sidestep. We're not concerned with that sidestep. Doesn't exist anymore. This essentially shows you how the track that they're proposing will run right over the JetBlue track, so the JetBlue private, special track will now just become the 4L That's the sidestep there, you see how it steps from one runway to the other, from right to left. We don't have to deal with that. Environmental justice impacts. First, what's interesting about this slide, and I'm sure there are other things, but to me, what jumps out, wow, the study area is pretty broad. It includes Randolph, Braintree, Quincy. Thank you very much. Because for our purposes and other purposes, we think that a study area, including other areas than just simply the center part of Milton and its west, is a rather appropriate. But the reason they put this forward, here we go, is this, the demographics. It's a special situation when you're running your planes over, you know, low-income and minority areas, and this shows that that's an issue here, especially if you're shifting planes onto them, which we'll see in a second. And you can see that, you know, I think I've mentioned in Matapan, 83% African And that, and you could see that, you know, I think I've mentioned in Matapan, 83% African-American. Dorchester, the part we're talking about, 43% in the last census, African-American. And that's a significant issue here. The, remember, we could go back, but the, the colors that were yellow were showing any decimal increase, but not, not above 65. The ones that were purple were actually decreased. So you can see that actually there might be a shift with respect to the, the planes under, and the concentration on the 4L under a, under a GPS, as you might expect, path. And the rest of these, that, you know, are a little bit repetitive, but I think you've got the point, and that's close into the airport, so that's not as relevant. Let me just go then to the next. CS, CSDA design. Here they are. I asked them to provide, and I'm not going to put it on the public record yet unless people object, but I, and I'll tell you why. I wanted them to look at, can you look at the model? Can you tell us what it would cost to do a few things, including an observation onsite and a comparison with the model as assumed, for example, with a guide to gear down or other matters? And they came back with, you know, a proposal on that and cost on that, which we could perhaps, for example, crowdsource. I mean, this, or maybe some of the municipalities would, would contribute. Let me just keep going to the last. Yeah, we're going to need some type of working group, and you know, I would say, as I mentioned, it isn't an MCAC prerogative necessarily, and we've got the names of the communities I mentioned, yes, stakeholders. There's already been outreach to the city councilors in Boston, Baker, Arroyo, Campbell, who are respectively representatives of the Matapan and Dorchester areas. I think, as I said, should be led by people under 4L. We might crowdsource any consultant funding or otherwise seek contribution. It has to start, I think, soon, given the July issue and the fact that we want to have, and I mentioned this, yes, MCAC has, isn't really in the center of this, but I did mention it to the MCAC folks that, you know, we, we want the FAA to meet earlier than July for input, and they acknowledged that they would support that to the extent that that is helpful. And that's, I think, that's it for the, the basic 4L matters. I'd start there, I think.
Thank you, Tom. Can we, can someone hit the lights?
Yeah, I get it, I get it.
All right. Katie, I think, can you give a brief update on ANAC? Is that right, Katie?
Very briefly, yes. I attended the, the meeting of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee last week. The chair is traveling, is not able to be here, but it was a very brief update on 4L EA, essentially what Tom had reported, that the person could not attend the MCAC meeting, and that there was going to be a discussion about it tonight. One thing that I thought was interesting was that the ANAC talked about possibly submitting to us for consideration, maybe a letter to some of the airlines, pointing out this issue about the gear being down and when it really should be down, and maybe that's something we'd want to submit to some of the airlines. So they're going to draft something for us to review and consider sending. And other than that, it was a general discussion about, they'd like to follow up on some of the recommendations they've made to us, and I think we could, we could follow, some of them we've already responded to, but the ones that are still open, perhaps we could, we could work with the chair through. But other than that, that was the main update at the meeting was, that was the main takeaway from the meeting, was that there'd be this letter that would be drafted for our consideration.
Okay. All right. So now, if anyone has any comments or questions, please come forward and sign in and address anything, address any comments or questions to me, and we'll see if we can, we can get
Hi, I'm Phil Drowhening, 23 Parkwood Drive. I, I appreciate what Tom said about the EA, but I have to say that our experience, Boston Fair Skies, with the 33LEA a long time ago, and our subsequent appeal, told me that there are a lot of parts of the EA that are not taken seriously by the FAA, and the idea of economic justice is, is just whitewashed or papered over. When you look at what happened with the decision, I think it was in, what, 1992 or maybe in the 70s, I don't know, where they decided that airplanes would not fly over Brookline, they diverted them from a wealthy community, Brookline, to a not-so-wealthy community, Matapan. And they had absolutely no trouble with that. So if you think economic justice means anything today, it really doesn't. And it's, we looked at it with the EA, and when you read what was in the 33L, it's, it's something that positively is not taken seriously. And the idea of pollution and pollutants, when you read the part of the 33L having to do with pollution and pollutants, it's outrageous. When we appealed, the, the court generally defers to the FAA as the subject matter expert. And so any arguments that citizens make are not taken very seriously. And the three-judge panel didn't even give us the opportunity to present to the court. And I thought that our case was really very good, but we didn't have an opportunity, and the judges unanimously ruled against us. So, you know, for us, it was an experiment. It was to see how the process worked, and, and I don't have a lot of confidence in it. The other thing, I guess, I would like to ask about is, has this committee, the Milton representatives to the 4L committee, advisory committee or whatever it's called, have they been chosen? Because I offered my name, I realize I'm not under 4L, but as a person subjected to the noise on 4R and 4L, I believe that I'm as impacted as anyone. And I'm just curious to know, has a decision been made about that committee?
So Phil, I, I can answer. We haven't appointed the committee yet.
Okay.
So hopefully, we'll do that, you know, given the timeframe here, hopefully we'll get that done. Our next meeting is on the 26th, and then after that, on March 12th. So hopefully, within the next two meetings, we'll get that, we'll get that group appointed.
Can I go back to the earlier part? The earlier part of the question?
Sure, sure.
So I spent a number of days on this, on 33L. I talked extensively with Myron Cassavat, who's the MCAC rep in Belmont, who lived the 33LEA experience. I asked, long story short, his recommendation was, you really got to get your own baseline data expert and do it. We did not do that. I agree with everything said about the way in which the DC circuit, or any of the three-judge panel circuit courts will defer to the, to the FAA, but his recommendation was what I said. And then, the reason I reached out to Steve Tabor, is Tabor was involved, and the entity I referenced there, CSDA, was involved in three challenges, that is to say, DC, over Georgetown, et cetera, Phoenix, and LAX, on, on EAs. And with, with mixed results, but, but they know the steepness of the, of the climb, the difficulty of the, of the, of the climb, and where there may be steps that could be taken. So I agree with you. It's important to understand the 33L experience, it's important to try to learn from it, and it's important to try to see whether or not there are ways you can deal with it. Lastly, I would not spend any time, I know this sounds extreme, so therefore, I would spend much less time during EA on particulates, on non-noise environmental impact. I think that's a really tough road, I think it's a vertical climb, as contrasted with some of the others, but that's just my view based on, so I think it would have to be focused on the kinds of things I've talked about, if possible. But that's just, that's just, that's just me.
Well, I defer to you on that, I guess, but I guess, having seen some very important issues be whitewashed or papered over in the EA, gives me almost no confidence in the EA itself. I think we should be part of the process. I, I agree with you absolutely that we should have our own expert, because that's the only thing that may drive the court in the event that there is a, a challenge. So I, I agree with you 100% on that. We have to be part of it, we have to be vocal in it, but I have a low level of confidence that, that we could succeed.
One last thought, okay? They didn't, so, I, I think that we, we also need to be a little more, I'm sure they were very thoughtful, but we need to be thoughtful around the, the, the justice aspect of this. And, you know, I was director of the Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights for decades, and I, I really do think that trying to shift planes over Matapan and, and Dorchester in that respect, if we early and often concentrate this regional administrator on that issue, it may, and then, it, there are, there are litigation processes that are parallel and separate with respect to that, that don't exist with respect to, you know, an environmental aspect of it on a standalone basis. So I would just, I would just leave it at that to say, there may be another element there, both in terms of work to be done and to develop, and then relief down the road.
I think that's a possible chink in the wall, but I have to say that, you know, the Civil Rights Act was passed in 1965. The protection for minority communities existed long before the, the decision of the court with respect to runway 27 and flights over Brookline and Metro West, so...
With all due respect, there's not a change in the law, and I sure, I sure know the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the applicable order that was issued for FAA. I'm talking about standing. I'm talking about the ability to go into court on, on a civil rights basis, as contrasted with going into court on an FAA challenge basis.
Okay.
So it's, it's two different, you know, two different court, court proceedings. That's all.
I guess I would have thought it would be done, have been done long ago. Nevertheless, I, I agree with what you're saying, it's a different action, and perhaps it has more power in these days than it might have had previously.
And a different venue.
The other thing I, I wanted to quickly talk about was, the last time I, I asked this, the select board about the 2002 rod, I believe the chair mentioned to me that we didn't have standing, Milton didn't have standing as a community in, let's say, a protection, a potential breach of contract action. And I read through the rod again, and, and it specifically mentions South Shore communities. So if in the rod, South Shore communities are specifically mentioned, I guess I'd say we must have standing. Maybe people would say Milton's not a South Shore community, but Milton has as much standing as any other South Shore community, and Milton has as much standing as, as Boston itself because we were all members of the Logan CAC. So what I did was, I, I wrote a letter to the select board, and it has 10 signatures with addresses. And what it asks is that the town go to town council and ask them to write a report about the viability of a, of a, of a contract action, a breach of contract action against the FAA and Massport concerning the 2002 rod. What, do we have standing or don't we? Is there a statute of limitations or is there not? If there is a statute of limitations, has it been passed? Again, my thought is that the statute of limitations began to, if there is a statute of limitations, it began to run when the Logan CAC was disbanded, and that hasn't been that long ago. So I'm asking that the, the select board go to town council and get a, a report written about whether this, there is a viable course of action, and whether, whether that action could be successful. And what I'd also like is, once the report is written and, and finished and signed, that there be another meeting where we talk about that before the town in a setting like this, and the attorney disclose, you know, why he feels the way he does, and, and briefly go through the key aspects of the report.
Can I ask you, can I ask you?
Sure.
You know, what you're asking is for town council to put in writing what he's told us, and that's fine.
And to be present, and to be...
No, well, I'm, I wonder if it makes sense to just have him be present for a meeting before we have to have him, you know, spend the money to put it, put together a report? Maybe, maybe it makes sense just to have him in a meeting and he can answer the questions of the meeting, rather than, rather than do the report first.
I defer to you on that, because you're the chair, and you make the decision.
Well, but you're asking, and so, so if you, if you're okay with just having town council coming in, if that will satisfy your, your request...
Well, we have 10 people asking, so, you know, if all 10 could be present, that's fine.
Okay.
And, and what I, what I'm asking is that he not only say, well, no, it's a bad idea, why is it a bad idea?
I understand, understood.
Why? Point by point by point. Or it's an excellent idea, let's move forward. Because God knows, the town spends legal fees on various things. So this is an important issue to the town, as you pointed out. It's, it's a key issue to the town of Milton. So we have to look at all possibilities for fighting this scourge. And so, I'll...
Thank you.
I don't know who...
Yeah, we can give it to Hillary, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Liz O'Rourke, and I'm a, my address is 79 Mar Avenue, and I've lived there since 1998. And I do feel the impact of both the 4R and the 4L and the 27th. And I just wanted to say that I think it's important that the ANAC group, ANAC group, has more representation from all areas of Milton. That, I think that could be helpful. It seems to not have that at the moment.
Well, and I see Luna in the, in the audience, we're, we're, we need to find someone on the west side of town. If it's not Luna, you know, we have to meet, we've been trying to connect with Luna. If it's not Luna, then we need to find someone from the west side of town. I don't disagree with that at all. So, and there are a couple of slots, they're open on ANAC, so, so I, so I don't disagree with that at all. And I don't think anyone else does.
And for, and for the working group also, so we need to sort of have outreach, it says, you know, to folks who have the time, you know, please, please help, you know, on the west, on the west side. We've also already contacted the staffs of the respective city councilors to be reaching out with respect to the other, you know, from Matapan and Dorchester.
Well, I, I, it is, I'm sure, very hard to find someone who's knowledgeable, and, I mean, I, half of the things that you're talking about, I, I do not understand.
Yeah.
I really don't. It's, but I do understand that you have someone named Steve Tabor from the CSDA Design Group as an expert.
So, so the, where Steve Tabor referred you to CSDA, and Randy, R-A-N-D-Y, Waldeck, W-A-L-D-E, okay, Randy Waldeck is the lead person at CSDA, who did work with regard to DC, LAX, Phoenix, on the, on the, looking at the model and saying, okay, wait a minute, look at reality compared to how they use that model, what's the, what's the match or not?
So is this group currently, I'm sorry to interrupt you, is this group currently working with the select board or with ANAC or...
Let me say it again. I personally, as, just me, myself...
Just as a citizen?
Just me, as a citizen. I said, wait a minute. I know enough to know that, and I've listened to Myron, and, whom I mentioned on 33L, and would have known anyway, who to contact, Steve Tabor. He, he put me in touch, and I said, essentially, what would I do? What I do is I would fund a, and I could personally do it. I would fund a... I would fund a model versus reality comparison on a couple of parameters that wouldn't, would not, for example, require a lot of analysis into census tracts, which he reminded me that, you know, that's a very bigger cost and time-consuming issue. Are there pinpoints that we could look on that ladder, which is tough to climb? And so that's how that came about. And I'll make the same, you know, discussion, presentation with any working group this forum. Say, "Hey, what about this idea?" And, you know, happy to help fund it.
And so we have that information about the expert. And so the question, and the cost, as I understand it, it's about $12,000?
Yeah, $11,200.
Yeah, so we're just gonna have to take that up in our board, perhaps at the next meeting.
For the kinds of things I've been talking about. Another person may say, "No, I'd subtract this and I'd add that." And so that may affect the cost. It's just the beginning to try to ballpark the kinds of model versus reality comparisons that might be useful, such as landing gear.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
It really covered a lot. I think I understand it a little bit better now.
And this will all be posted and call me anytime.
Okay, posted.
On the, so on the Milton Town and Milton website, there's a section called Massport Community Advisory Committee. Hit that button, and then there's a list of things. This will be on, the next one on that list.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. And, I mean, I look forward to, it sounds like you're really suggesting that we work on the noise level issue, part of it, the 65 DCL.
Personally, for purposes of this environmental assessment over the next period of time. Yes, separately, and that's for another discussion, I hope we could maybe have that. I know this is going to occur at the MCAC in June. Particulates, right? The environmental impact of particulates, there are studies going on by BU and Tufts jointly at MIT. And there's gonna be a presentation by those scientists in June.
In June?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be very interesting to hear about. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Rourke. Anyone else?
I'm Cindy Christensen. I live at 59 Commer Street. I had texts that I wanted to read, but I've decided to give that to you to put as part of the meeting record, which I'll do at the end of what I have to say. I'm glad the focus has been on 4L. I want to point out that I've worked with groups across the country, and there's been no EA that has had a finding of significant impact. So I think that's what we should expect for this, too. There currently is no threshold values in the 1050 dot one, dot F for vulnerable populations. I think that's one avenue that should be explored. The, I believe that, I didn't see, Tom, what you said they were going to claim to use for a baseline year? Did you have that answer?
Yeah, the baseline they're gonna use is the actual flight patterns from November 1, 2018 to October 31, 2019, as full.
Yeah, so one thing I want to point out about that that I think is important to look into further is that they've basically reestablished a baseline year that they will, with almost certainty, not show any difference for because they've been using the 4L paths during those years after they have them on the cockpit computers. So they have, and I've also learned that they've done this in the past in different locations across the country.
That's one of the reasons I asked that very first question about, "Well, wait a minute, you've suspended the NOTAM, the Notice Department of Pilots." And they came back with a, and they said, "Well, that's, as you saw, that's kind of procedural." But once the FMS, once the Flight Management System had that GPS capability in it, it can be used by JetBlue or others. So we need, you know, that's a subsidiary piece that we're gonna need to have to probe with, you know, that working group's gonna have to reiterate deeper that kind of question, yeah.
There's also a NOTAMs on the 4L visual. And they claim that that's not being used. But as we all know, they are using that. I've done a lot of work with the DNL noise metric. And I can tell you that there will be no cumulative effect. They can add whatever runways, whatever departures, whatever arrivals they want to this 4L analysis, and it will show no significant effect except for possibly those that abut the airport. The other day, there were four days in a row that Milton had 16, over 1,600 approaches to the 4R and 4L. And I did an upper bound calculation of what the DNL would be. And that, by that, I mean, the people in the sandwich with the loudest planes that could possibly have gone over, would they have reached a DNL of 65 with that kind of abuse? One day, there were 537 arrivals. And the answer is no. So if I can't reach an upper bound of 65 for four days, what that means to me is that they could repeat that pattern of 1,600 planes over a four-day period over Milton for the rest of the year. And they would still show no significant noise over Milton. Once again, a Fonzie, just like every other EA has been. One thought that I have that I think deserves some contemplation, I'm not recommending it, but I do think that it deserves some thought, is that, as you know, there are restrictions to some of the runways. And I'm wondering if it would be a good strategy to accept the 4L RNAV with restrictions. Possibly nighttime restrictions, possibly use restrictions. That's something I think should be considered. As you probably know, the FAA noise survey is supposed to be complete. Some say it should have been complete by now, and it is complete. It just has not been released. There's a lot of talk among communities across the country that this will not be released until, in some cases, the metroplex analyses are done. In our case, the 4L analysis is done. The word on the street is that the noise survey is going to show that 65 DNL is not a valid metric for measuring the type of noise that we're hearing. I also believe that back in, that we should be considering the statistical assumptions of the model that they use. Engineers tend to not use quantification of variation. Statisticians do. And when I first started working on this with the 33L group that Phil Johening mentioned, I was contacted by an attorney in New York, a retired aviation attorney, who told me that I was on target as far as looking at margin of error for these estimated values. And I'm happy to share that information if requested. So I'll hand you what I was going to say, and I hope you'll make it part of the record.
Sure, thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. Hillary, if you could make sure we get Cindy's. Thank you very much. As I mentioned, because the, because the ANAC Chair was unavailable tonight, we may do something similar to this in the next couple of months when he's available. So he can be present and make a presentation. And we'll open it up for questions and comments then as well. So, thank you very much, and we'll move on to, oh, Melinda.
Can I ask a question?
Please, yeah.
So Liz O'Rourke said something that made me wonder about people who are interested in working on the 4L, people who are interested in working on the 4L working group. And I'm wondering what level of knowledge people really need to have because I wouldn't want people who could really contribute because of their lived experience not to step forward if it would be appropriate. So, do you have any guidance?
I think it's, you know, in most walks of life, people have worked and needed to consult with an expert and get some advice. It's really about, you know, energy and listening and then making judgments. Because a lot of this, as Christensen said, she talked about differentials and, and I would say it this way. If the model and the technology is assuming one thing, and the reality or some modification of the assumption suggests another, then the expert can kind of target that. And I do believe that with regard to, for example, the Georgetown DC, I think that that environmental effort was successful. I think some of the others were good efforts and not successful, essentially because of the DNL issue. And I don't think the DNL issue is going to change by virtue of anything that's ongoing with regard to that study. It's just gonna reiterate to the United States Senate what they already know, which is the FAA should change it, but the Republican majority has been unwilling to do that. So it's that kind of person who has the time, the experience of being under the 4L, can listen to an expert, just like listening to a doctor, and then make some judgments, I think.
All right, we can move on. Thank you, everyone. We're gonna move on to item eight, which is an update on the Ice House issue. When we last met on, thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
When we, and thank you, everyone. When we last met on January 22, we were, Ms. Collins and I were authorized, along with other town officials, to meet with the developer of the Ice House property. We had that meeting on the 23rd. And we put a statement on the website, and I'll read the statement here just so we, anyone who missed it on the website. During our meeting on the January 23rd, it was a frank and fruitful discussion. The result was that the developer has agreed to revise its plans for the Ice House property to accomplish three goals. One, a design that is more appropriate, given the physical form of the neighborhood and the character of the Blue Hills Parkway area. Two, a small footprint store/coffee shop that would bring some basic amenities to the neighborhood. And three, reconsideration of the proposed density. The developer anticipates these revisions may take two to three months. We appreciate the developer's willingness to engage and to consider the needs of the neighborhood and the town. And we look forward to continuing to work together for a mutually beneficial project. So that is the update from our meeting with the developer. Any questions, comments? Mr. Wells?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do wanna say that I had read a story in the Dorchester Reporter last week that came out right after our meeting. And it talked about a new local neighborhood market that was opening up called The Daily. And I sent this to the Chair, and I sent it to our new Assistant Town Planner, Allison Quinn, who arranged last week. She and I and Jen McColl went and met with them. And the reason I say this is I really encourage, this is definitely something that I think in this project, this side of town and this neighborhood would greatly appreciate. It's owned by the Baker family. It's their first venture into this. You can come or I go wrong, I'll, it's about 13,000 square feet. It's actually a two-sting facility. It's a three-story building separated by, I'm not sure how many units. They actually separated the building. So instead of one big building, they're actually separated by a walkway. And I believe, have you taken the Chair yet there? Did you two get there or no? I know you had a cancer.
No, it's scheduled.
Chair Taguas is scheduled to go and see her. The reason I say it is it's on Seven Hill Ave. And I really encourage anyone, and one of the things I was impressed the most is, it opened on Thursday, we were there on Monday, and I ran into two people from Milton, who they had heard about it and came to see it. This is definitely something, they're interested in expanding to have a couple more of these. It definitely fits the vision of what we are looking for. I just encourage anyone who's interested in the Ice House or lives in this neighborhood, if you're cruising through Dorchester, take a stop on Dorchester, on Seven Hill Ave, and go see this, it's called The Daily. You can Google the articles online on the Dorchester Reporter. It was published last week. And it has all the things that they talked about, you know, it has groceries, it has a bakery, it has a small counter for lunch and coffee. Actually, our staff had lunch there that day. And I really wanna thank the Baker family, they came and met with us. It's their neighborhood, they grew up, this is the first time they've ever done anything like this. But when I saw it and read about it, and then to go and visit it, it definitely meets what these neighbors have really been seeking, something like that. And to see it in real life kinda gives you an idea of, and I really grasped it, and I just wanted to make that public so people are aware of that. And that's The Daily on Seven Hill Ave, it opened last week. Did I cover that all right? Okay. You didn't know I was gonna do that either, but I just wanted to.
Any other comments or questions?
It's on Seven Hill Ave. I don't know what now, but it's a small street, you can't miss it. And it's called The Daily.
Corner of Sydney.
Yeah, I said, ask the DOT kid, he'll know, even though he's from St. Anne's, but.
102 Seven Hill Ave.
It's right next to the Seven Hill Grill and across from McKenna's Breakfast Place.
Okay, all right, all right, great. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Collins?
I guess I just wanna thank the Chair and the Vice Chair for the progress, and the Chair of the Planning Board for the progress you're making in some of these discussions with the developer. Hopefully, we'll get a good result and an improved project. But thank you for your effort and the time you've spent on this.
Ditto.
All right, and more to come. Nothing imminent because they're doing the work for the next two or three months. But hopefully, we'll hear something positive then.
And I believe the Chair is going, Chair Taguas is actually gonna mention this place to them as well. He's going to mention that to them, Allison and one of them.
Well, I guess in addition to our Chair and Vice Chair, we should thank the developer also for willing to engage.
The developer has been more than amenable and more than willing to engage in a very fruitful way, so.
Goodness.
So that's been a good thing.
Yes, I think too, the fact that people could be so clear and we had the zoning to point to, I think it'll help us all get to a good result.
Okay, item nine. Item nine, let me just, item nine is a proclamation. And the motion would be just to sign a proclamation. And this is a proclamation for a longtime Milton resident who has provided great service and we hope will continue to provide great service to the town. I got to know Nate Burke when he was, when he served on the Warren Committee. We served on the Warren Committee together for a little while. He has since served on the Commission on Disability. He has worked in his roles to improve accessibility throughout Milton, including he worked on the construction of the accessible path around Turner's Pond. Nathan, some years back, suffered a catastrophic accident. And he hasn't let that deter him from his efforts. Since that time, he's received a master's degree in education. He teaches and tutors college-level math. He's tutored Milton students in math. And from all accounts, beyond my observation, he has managed his physical difficulties with great grace and humility and has not, as I said, let it deter him in any way. He has shown great drive, great patience, great humor, great strength of mind to continue. He has had a great effect on the Warren Committee, I know and I understand, on the Commission on Disability. And he's helped pave the way for other quadriplegics to enjoy basic rights provided under the ADA. And so I think it's appropriate that we recognize Nathan's efforts and his accomplishments. And we look forward to his service and his accomplishments going forward in years to come. So we do have before us a proclamation. And the motion is just to sign the proclamation honoring his accomplishments and service.
I'll move that we approve and sign a proclamation honoring Nathan Burke's accomplishments and service to the town of Milton.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And at some point. And at some point, I know Ms. Collins and I, and anyone else who wants to go, we're going to bring this to Nathan. He's currently in Newton, and we're going to bring that to him, and we're looking forward to catching up with him then. So.
Very good.
All right, so thank you for that. Thank you for that. Item 10, defense viewer appointment. Apparently, we, in the town of Milton, need to appoint a fence viewer. And I'm going to turn this over to our fence viewer expert, Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Yeah, so it was brought to our attention that the town, under state law enacted in 1693, needs to appoint two or more fence viewers. And if you would allow me to read from a sheet, I reached out to Branch Lane, who is all-knowing on most things, town of Milton. This position was first established in 1693. These early fence viewers were tasked with arbitrating or prosecuting fence crimes by adjoining farmers. Trespassing by livestock was illegal, boundaries and fences had to be maintained. The town clerk maybe provide you with some insight as to who, if anyone, are fence viewers. So the woman to my right did great diligence, looked around to other communities. We did check with the town clerk. The last two fence viewers were appointed in 2003, it was a resident of the town, as well as a former town administrator and living legend, John Cronin. So it is, it came to our attention that there's a constituent in town who has asked for a fence viewer to come out and make a decision on a fence that, not his, but on his property, this is what brought it to light. So I bring it to this board tonight to attempt to possibly.
Fill the gap.
Me, or, yeah, fill the gap and make sure that we're following the law.
So do you have a recommendation?
So in the research, we saw a lot of it comes from the Building Commissioner's Office, Inspeccional Services. Some communities use town administrators, some people use residents appointed by the Select Board. One community, and it escapes me, actually has town meeting appoint a fence viewer.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like a good idea.
So it's here for you to decide.
So we have a candidate. I don't think we currently have any other candidates to be a fence viewer, but perhaps we will in subsequent meetings. We need to, I guess, reach out to the building, perhaps the Building Commissioner, who might be, Ms. Collins?
Sorry. Well, I was trying to wait for you to finish.
No, no, that's all right.
So one thing that wasn't clear to me from the research, and I couldn't figure it out, I went and looked at the Chapter 98, Section 34. Do they work as a pair, or singly? I mean, this is a dispute, so I just wondered.
It's my understanding that it's singularly.
Okay.
And if one is indisposed, you have a.
Then the other one.
And vice versa.
So what you want to do, you want to vote?
I think it would be prudent to.
So you and Joe?
I will volunteer.
We need to, we need to, Mr. Prondek hasn't volunteered, hasn't, he's not a candidate at this point, but he may be in the future. So we'll have to, we'll have to consult with him on that. So I think maybe at this point, since Mike's the only candidate, maybe we appoint him now, and then we see if we can.
I'll make a motion to appoint. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, that's okay. So it's interesting, I saw here that in Rockland, they also use the sealer of weights and measures?
So that also comes out of the Building Inspector's Office?
Right, right. So that just made me wonder. I mean, we have constables, could, can you not be an elected official, or?
I haven't looked into it enough.
Because I wondered if they might be interested in being appointed.
Constables?
The constables?
You're going to pay?
I don't, oh, yeah. Well, I didn't know if they, we might ask if they'd like to volunteer.
And certainly, anyone out there who wants to be a fence viewer.
Yes.
And wants to, yes, exactly. And wants to put in their application to be a fence viewer, we will be considering all applicants. But certainly, you know, it seems from other communities, it's usually the Building Commissioner, so it seems like we need to, we need to see if Mr. Prondek.
Someone in that office.
Someone in that office.
Code enforcement officer. Weights and measures would be Mr. Kelly, who works in that office. But, yes, it seems like it's someone who's familiar with the building code and.
So, Mr. Chair, how about this, at least to get us started, I will make a motion to appoint Town Administrator Michael Dennehy, a fence viewer, and if he comes back to us with a second candidate, I would support that as well. Is that okay?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 11, conference with the cap, excuse me, conference with Amy Dexter, the town accountant and the chair, I believe still.
She is.
Of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Here's Dexter.
So as the town accountant readies herself, if you recall, two years ago, there was a suggestion made that the town administrator take a stronger role in working with the Capital Improvement Committee. It's a fantastic committee. What happened more often than not, though, was department heads coming in over and over again to present. I think the last two years were very fruitful in that I would qualify things, we would ask for a list of information from each of the department heads, boards and committees, and then ask them to prioritize them. I would then vet that information with the department heads and then bring it to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. It worked well the last two years. It worked very well again this year. I want to thank them for their patience for that. Mr. Wells, who's the representative, member Wells, who's the representative from this board, and all the members. They meet at 7:15, probably met eight times.
Somewhere.
This year.
At least.
Eight to 10 times. There were times when they needed to bring in subject matter experts, the parks commissioners come in, they've kind of changed the way they do things with respect to what they're looking for, for capital needs. As always, we bring in the public works folks. This year, we had a couple of special testifiers. Mr. Walker, former school committee chair, talked about the need for one of the public safety requests that came to the school department, as well as Bob Patterson, who's the IT director for school. So very fruitful series of interviews and presentations. We had an independent resident come in, William Brokov, who had presented to the Warren Committee last year. He's suggesting, and done a lot of work independently, to try to, requesting the town to finish the loop around Pope's Paul, the pond, right? Finish the bridge, if you will. It's not a continuous loop. He gave a great presentation. We heard from the Fire Building Committee, Brian Walsh and Dan Clark. So I think essentially what you have in front of you, I can highlight as kind of a quality-of-life type scenario. A lot of the stuff you'll see in here will make everyone's life a little better in Milton. Those that like to walk around Turner's Pond, there's a request in there for the upgrade to Turner's Pond. There was some work done eight to 10 years ago, led by former Parks Commissioner Terry Driscoll. That walkway material has lived its life and needs to be replaced. But we can go through all of these if you want, but most of the stuff you see from an equipment need is a must-have. We've got some equipment that's more than 10 years old. You know, the fleet, thanks to the Capital Improvement Committee's work over the last four or five years, and the Copeland Foundation for the work that they've done to donate some equipment to the town. We're confident that the fleet is in good shape. I think what you see driving around the town is in good working order and is a good representation of the work that was done. There is some equipment in need of replacement. I mean, Mr. Wells talks about, and has seen, the Parks Department Utility Truck ineffectively.
On one, two wheels.
Yeah. So there's a laundry list of stuff in here, which we can go through, but that's just my overall statement, that I think, we did hit the pause button a little bit. What you see here is a 20% reduction in what we've done.
In the bonded?
Bonded and non-bonded, the combination, is about 20% less than what we've averaged in the last three years, understanding that there's some larger looming projects coming our way. If you take a look at free cash, the committee had entertained a motion to use 1 million of the 1.764 million dollars. That's a reduction, on average, from what we've been using for free cash over the last three years, on average, with the idea of making sure that our stabilization funds continue, and OPEB and affordable housing, continue to get the funding that they need.
A reduction of what's been used for capital, or what's been used overall?
What's been used for, okay, so if you look at the total non-bonded, right, the one-time capital expenses.
Yep.
Over the last three years, 81% of the free cash has been used for that. The 1 million out of the 1.764 would be 57% of that. So we'd be putting 43% away to our stabilization funds, OPEB, affordable housing.
Or to other items.
Correct, yeah. But the idea was, of the committee, was to use a million of that for one time. Items that don't necessarily make sense to be bonded, but things like the Pope's Paul Bridge are, you know, some of the one-time expenditures, so.
But we can, we have comments or questions for the members, unless, Amy, you want to say something at the start?
Only if you want me to give you a little summary of what's in the memo that was distributed, otherwise.
Would that be helpful?
I can just feel. So I have to be recused on bonded capital, but I have some comments on the non-bonded capital, and I'd like to make a motion to ask the Capital Committee revisit some of the non-bonded capital, in response to the Finance Committee's meeting with Chair Dexter of the Capital Committee on Monday morning.
So let's take the non-bonded, and then when we talk about bonded, then you can step out. So let's take, let's focus right now just on the non-bonded. So, Ms. Collins, do you want to, or do you want to take it first, or do you want to have Amy go through it? How do you want to proceed?
Whatever your preferences.
Well, I mean, if you want to take us through what your recommendations are, maybe that's the best way to go.
Well, yeah, and, okay, and let me just state, so I'm speaking as a follow-up to the Finance Meeting.
Yes.
But we did not take an official vote, really, at that meeting. So Melinda and Mike Dennehy and Amy Dexter and I are on the Finance Committee. We had a discussion, it was actually a fairly long discussion, we went through a lot of these items, and we didn't ask for a specific amount to be reduced, but we identified the fact that we have 1.7 million in free cash available this year. The Capital Committee has asked for a million dollars of that. And so the president, you know, the comment that you made, Mr. Dennehy, that's interesting that it's 57% as opposed to 81%. I think we have some unique issues this year that, generally, that this board has always been very supportive of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee's recommendations, and we've pretty much wholesale adopted them. I think this year, we have some unforeseen and some other items that this board needs to consider prioritizing, and that we may need to ask the Capital Committee to reduce their request by, if we were to spend a million dollars of the 1.7 in free cash, that only leaves us $700,000 for reserve funds, Affordable Housing Trust, other items. And I think we want to be able to kind of put a fair amount into those funds, especially the stabilization fund, the OPEB trust. The Affordable Housing Trust is something that, for a number of years, we've tried to put a significant amount of money into, and we haven't really been able to do that. We've been putting in small amounts. With everything going on, the Affordable Housing Trust trustees have been quite active, they have a lot going on, there's a lot that they've been looking at, a lot that they're working on. I'd like us to be able to put, you know, I'll just use a round number, $100,000 into that trust, maybe more. We might end up at a lesser point, but I'd like us to be thinking a little bit bigger for the Affordable Housing Trust this year. It's just my personal view, and others may share it. Roadway stabilization, we weren't able to fund last year. I'd like to see us fund that, to some extent, this year. But, you know, we just had a long presentation on airplane noise. We talked about the $12,000 that may be needed for a consultant regarding the 4L environmental assessment. We also have ear quality monitors. We were able to purchase one for about $10,000. We'd like to purchase more of those. The Airplane Noise Advisory Committee has approached us about hiring an advocate or consultant on that issue. We haven't made any decision on that, but that's, obviously, that would cost some money. Maybe even more significantly in terms of cost, we have 40B projects, we have a lot of planning efforts, a lot of economic development projects that we're looking at, whether it's East Milton Square, or responding to some proposals along lines of 40B, or other zoning initiatives that we want to take. The Planning Board has $50,000 in their budget. That doesn't go very far. I think we should move the $30,000 for the Master Plan Implementation Committee out of operating funds and into free cash like we did last year. That's a small amount, but when you accumulate all of those, I think we're going to have needs for reserve funds, for affordable housing, for planning efforts, for this board's priorities, that are going to exceed $700,000. If you're putting enough money into reserves. And I think this is a year where we should ask the Capital Committee, I'd like to, you know, get their input, go back to them and say, how would you reduce the million dollars? What might you prioritize? Because the sense I got from the Finance Meeting is that there's a little bit of flexibility in some of these numbers. For instance, we have $50,000 for trees, that's additional trees beyond what's already in the DPW budget. So it may be a year in which we want to prioritize funding the 4L environmental assessment consultants versus 100 additional trees. Those sorts of judgments. So, well, I, you know, in the past, we've always approved what the Capital Committee has asked for. To me, this is a high amount, given the amount of free cash we have, given that we're four years out from an override, given that we have a lot of other priorities. So I would like to ask the board to, especially in light of some of the airplane issues, we didn't, you know, 4L environmental assessment, as Tom said, we've been waiting for that for five years. They announced it the day before Christmas. So that wasn't anything we planned for as we were preparing the budgets in the fall. Same thing with some of the 40B issues. A lot of that is new. So I think we're, I think we're going to need to consider additional funding from free cash for some of those projects. And I'd like to see us not omit a year of, say, funding into the roadway restabilization fund, or not putting money into the stabilization fund. I'd like us to continue doing that.
Can I ask Katie, do you think we could, if we go that route, do you think we could give the Capital Committee a target, or a ballpark, as to how much you think that they should look at?
Yeah, I'd like to, I mean, again, this is just me speaking individually, the Finance Committee did not take a position on this, but I'd like to ask the Capital Committee to look at somewhere in the range of $200,000, little, you know, give or take, maybe a little less than that, maybe a little more, but somewhere in that ballpark.
Of the free cash?
Of the million-dollar request.
It'll never happen. Reduce it by 200,000, or only take 200,000?
No. Reduce. I mean, I think when Mike went in, his recommendation was somewhere around 700 to 750,000. And so that's, I think that's what our discussion was, to see if we could not go all the way to 700, but to get a little closer, just because we do have a lot of needs that we hadn't really foreseen until a little more recently. Well, not all of them, but some of them are quite new.
Mr. Wells?
So I'm a bit passionate here.
Passion is good.
So first off, the Capital Committee voted unanimously. I do not see them reconsidering it at all. There was, as you know, Amy and Michael, there was a lot of discussion in that room. These are quality-of-life, public safety issues, things that involve the infrastructure of this community. And I'm not saying the other things aren't important, and I'm fine with spending the other 700 on the whole thing, but there were over $7 million in needs for this fiscal year in capital requests. Seven million. They're funding the bare minimum. And just to think about the Capital Committee who sits on it, you're talking about Bill Ritchie, Mr. Dennehy, schools, Warren Committee, two Warren Commissioners, citizens, I mean, these people come and roll up their sleeves every single week. I, and I, and I don't want to speak for the whole committee, but I could tell, when you were there, Michael, you saw how strongly the committee supported this. And the bigger issue that I think is two, is A, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, I don't think the committee's going to even want to meet on this again. B, I don't think they're going to change their vote. And C, from a bigger issue, it's going to be a nightmare if we go to town meeting with the Capital Committee making one recommendation and us wanting to reduce it. I mean, these are, there's no real gravy in this. This is like nuts and bolts stuff, and you know me, I'm going to fight for things that are operational. Department heads are already working a level doll, level service. I mean, every year, it's tighten the belt, tighten the belt, and they came in, no one came in, you know, like, I mean, Scott McKay and the park commissioners came in begging for a dump truck, that I went and saw that nobody should be driving, never mind having town Milton CMO plates on it. I mean, serious things. I get it, I'm fine with putting 100 towards roadway, I'm fine with putting 100 towards, I'm fine with putting money, increasing MPIC, spending the whole 730 and that, but as far as change, the only, the only thing that I could see, and you tell me if I'm wrong, Amy, is do we keep the number the same and barn more? And that's a decision that I think might be able to reopen. might be able to reopen, and bring it down to 200,000, but not reduce the capital expenditure for this year. Every year, I mean, it's, we've finally, finally, finally gotten these department heads and these, and our operational personnel to where capital is real, it's real. I mean, the schools are 10 years old, they're already having capital needs, the fire department stations are a disgrace because we never put anything into them, the roadways are there because we didn't put in, credit to Tom Hurley and Amy, they finally got us on a schedule, we're using real dollars and being fiscally prudent in how we spend the capital money, and I just don't, I'm sorry being passionate, but these are real things involving real people who make a real difference in our lives each and every day, from schools, there isn't a department that wasn't touched in that room.
So passion is good.
I know.
Passion is good, the only thing that I would say, I don't think it's too much, and we can see where we go here, I don't think it's too much for this board to ask the Capitol Committee to look at a couple of things again, I don't think that's too much to ask, but anyway, that's my only thought on that. Ms. Conlon?
So, Mr. Chair, and what I took away from the meeting that the Finance Committee had on Monday was that there may be some of these numbers where either Senator Timmelti's trying to get some money from the state, and obviously we can't, that's not guaranteed, we have to go through the whole state budget process, we're months away from knowing whether they'll get into a bond bill or not, but for instance, the, you know, one question that I think Ms. Collins asked was regarding the feasibility study for the Lower Guile Field Road, we actually didn't have any estimates for that, that might be a fluid number, there may be a little bit of room in that number. The trees is something that we can really, I think we should think about. The other, I was told that the 23,600 for the Town Clerk's records, that was kind of actually backed into that million dollars, that we may be able to revisit that, so I think the Capitol Committee, first of all, as an advisory committee to this board, we've typically, given the, gone along with the Capitol Committee and given the Capitol Committee what they've asked for, you know, in terms of, obviously, Tom Meeting is the one that makes the final decision, but we've supported it, but this is, I think a million dollars out of 1.7 in free cash for capital is a high number, I think back to the years when we were lucky if we could spend $100,000 of free cash on some capital items, we did three or four items. In the last probably 10 years, thereabouts, we've actually done a lot of capital improvements in the town, we spent a lot of money, we bonded it, but we've also spent some free cash and done some non-bonded capital improvements, and, you know, the fleet is in a good situation now, we've spent, there's always going to be a large list of capital projects, but we've spent a fair amount in recent years, we have not really put much into the Affordable Housing Trust, we have 40B projects, we've got, you know, we've got a couple of new ones that are coming this way, we're going to need to hire consultants for those projects. The bond rating agencies want to see us putting money into the OPEB Trust, they want to see us putting money into stabilization, so I wouldn't want anything, my request of this to be reflective of not taking seriously department heads or operational staff's recommendations, these are all great things to spend money on, we have limited dollars, I think we have to take a harder look at it this year, especially where it was originally 750, and then we're up to a million, and I know some of that was because of the school Chromebooks, but there may be some flexibility in these numbers, I don't think there's anything wrong with us as the elected select board saying that our Capitol Committee, we've got some other priorities, including some recent ones, you know, two new 40Bs is not nothing, and we're going to need to hire consultants for that. Airplane issues are a pretty serious issue, we just said that it's our highest priority at the federal level, it's one of the highest priority issues in town, I think we're going to need some funding for that, and I don't want to not put money into the Affordable Housing Trust, or put very little in, or underfond or not fund stabilization, which we've done before, and yet fund a million dollars in capital, when some of these possibly could be extended out, some of these could probably get deferred until next year, or we can see if there's any room in the numbers, so that's all I'm asking the Capitol Committee to do, and again, I said ballpark, so if the Capitol Committee comes back and has a number that's a little different than 200, you know, that may be helpful as well, I think we should just ask for it to be reconsidered.
Other comments or questions?
Just one more thing, we had a very good discussion on Monday at the Finance Committee meeting, the four of us, one thing we talked about was the health of our stabilization funds, so the Town Accountant is going to take a look at the 2013 DOR report, again, it's just a suggestion, it's not, you know, it's not the mantra or the way it has to be, but if the stabilization funds are at a healthy point, can we sharpen our pencil with respect to the free cash, and move some of the stuff around, and prioritize the things that Member Conlon had mentioned, while not cutting as much from the free cash as possible. Some of these things, like the lower field at Guile Road, it's probably a year or two away, but the seed money is very important to Scott McKay, the Parks Commissioners and the people that presented that, that number was, it's estimated at this time to be a million-dollar project, and it's probably going to be a public-private partnership, similar to the playground planners, et cetera, that $100,000 seed money could, might be reduced, but the idea was to make sure that that was in the pipeline. We heard from members last year, Parks Commissioners residents, Mr. Sistroni was in here two times, I think, so, the idea was just to seed that project and get that going, knowing that it's a couple of years out, but that if, if the understanding is that our stabilization funds are in a somewhat healthy position, that we can, we can take a better look at OPEB and the Affordable Housing Trust and these other things that Member Conlon has suggested, which are very, very important, very recently, we'll talk about the two 40Bs that were dropped on the town's lap on Monday, so, but yeah, I concur, and we still have to follow through on what that DOR report suggests, that the town carries as healthy stabilization funds.
Other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wells?
On three points, A, on the trees, I want to refer back to when the Shea Tree Advisory Committee came here, and a point of concern earlier this year, referring that we've been losing 150 trees a year for X amount of years, and the only money we received from it to motivate us putting any dollars was a private grant. With regard to the fleet, the fleet is in the condition of its end because it got a million-dollar input from a private grant, and as far as the Guile Road, I listened to them. You know, we talk about MassPAC and all these committees, the Youth Task Force, it's the fields where our kids are, that's where the structure is, we even put, I don't remember last time, we put a dime into the field, the best field we have in town was paid for with private money, like, these are serious things, that like, they're coming, they come before you, the Scott McKay and the whole Park Commissioners came before us, like, I went down and looked at that field, it's a joke, shame on us for even putting our kids on a field like that, so we're just trying to help them, like, these aren't things that, like, no one just would just pull a rabbit out of a hat, they're real deal things, so...
I think the other thing that needs to be mentioned, too, is that the Capital Improvement Committee spent a lot of time talking about what's out there for bonding, and what our percentage, based on what we're bringing in as a town, and Amy's done a lot of research on that, because we want to make sure that it's not one year where we're in great shape, the next year it spikes, and you have this roller coaster ride, where it's kind of like an easy glide, right, not the 3% glide we were talking about earlier, but just a normal glide so that we're not really, because undoubtedly, it's going to affect, the debt service is going to affect our operating expenses one year if we're bonded too high, so Amy did a lot of work on that, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
If I could just say a couple of things, so to Mr. Dennehy's point about the Department of Revenue's recommendation for percentage of reserves, the Department of Revenue recommends that your reserves, which in their definition of reserves, that your undesignated or unrestricted fund balance, which includes all of your stabilization funds, they recommend 5% to 7% of your operating expenses, at the end of June of 2019, so the end of fiscal year 19, the Town of Milton was at 7.9%, so they're fairly healthy, doesn't mean that there couldn't be a policy that you would strive for more than that, so I did do that research. I also wanted to just point out, to Mr. Wells's point, is total for the five-year capital plan, $95 million in capital needs. Now, that does include the fire stations, the DPW yard, doesn't include anything significant for school needs, there's nothing on the plan for that, so that's another very large amount that I expect will come down the pipeline in the next few years, but if you strip those things out, the five-year ask was over $26 million, so $3.8 million isn't a very large investment in our infrastructure and our capital. With that being said, I would, I would think that the Capitol Committee, if you're asking them to reconsider, would probably like a number, so if it's 200,000, I prefer that I can go to them and say 200,000, and again, to Mr. Wells's point, not to speak on behalf of the committee, but my thought from all of the meetings that we've had, that Mr. Dennehy was in attendance, first of all, when he put forward his draft, it was a draft recommendation, the whole process was a very collaborative process this year, Mr. Dennehy was at every single meeting, very interactive, they didn't take his recommendation lightly and say, no town administrator, we don't agree with you, it was something that we talked about quite a bit, that we have a lot, we don't want to keep kicking the can down the road, okay, so that committee unanimously wanted to fund more. With that being said, I think there might be more of an appetite to reconsider if we switched the couple 100,000 to bonded versus, to Mr. Wells's point, to keep it at the same total.
So, let me just say this, just because I don't want to choke off the conversation, but I do want to ask you, well, first I'll say, I don't think Ms. Conlon is asking for wholesale changes, I think she's just seeing if we can maybe whittle a few things down, or maybe move a few things into the other column, I think that's what she's suggesting, but let me ask you this, again, I don't want to get you off track, but the 29 and a half million for the DPW yard, is that still in play? Because I haven't really heard much about that recently.
So, it's not to that, I believe when Chase Berkley came in, he said there's, well, between Chase and, well, Bill Ritchie, it was, this number was from the former DPW director, and they believe that's completely inflated, and that it would probably be closer to half of that.
This is from the report, the report, there was a report.
Correct, the DPW.
This is if you redid everything, I think, and I think the new plan would to be do it in pieces, and not just...
Is that something we should, you know, at some point reflect, maybe not now, but at some point, we need to, we probably need to get some reality into that?
You have a couple of years.
Okay, no, no, I just, just in terms of what we say, because if we're saying it's 29 and a half million for DPW, you know, and it's not going to be, well, that, you know, that's maybe something we might want to follow up on. Melinda?
No, I was just agreeing, because then it's not $95 million.
Exactly, that's exactly, that's the point.
Well, that's probably not in the next five years either, but this is what was submitted to me, so...
I understand, I understand, but, so that's something that maybe Chase can, Chase can follow up on, so anyway, I didn't mean to choke off the conversation, Ms. Conlon.
Yeah, I thank you, I just wanted to clarify, I mean, we're always grateful for the gifts that the town receives for capital projects, and we have received gifts for trees and for the fleet, but we've also bonded quite a bit of money for the fleet in recent years, so we've had a lot of new vehicles that have been bonded. The trees, you know, I've been on this board for seven years, I've voted for the Capitol Committee's budget every year of those seven years, I was a big advocate of forming the Shea Tree Advisory Committee, have a lot of respect for their work, we already have, we have 50,000 in the DPW budget for trees, that's going to give us, we've been told, about 100 trees, this would be an additional $50,000 for 100 trees, well, maybe it could be 25 for 150 trees that, you know, so I don't think anything that I'm suggesting should be controversial, or the Capitol Committee should view it as a negative feedback, and I, you know, I don't know how more I could say it, the 4L Environmental Assessment, we've been waiting for five years, hit our plate the day before Christmas, 40Bs got dropped on our door on Monday, we got two of them, we're going to have some additional consulting costs, that, we didn't know that when the Capitol Committee put their proposal forward, so all I'm saying is we've got some recent information, and we want to keep our stabilization funds going in the right direction, especially OPEB, so we may want to just ask our Capitol Committee to use that round number and revisit some of these, and if there's issues with revisiting, you know, we should, they should let us know, but this is, I think, a reasonable request to make of our advisory committee.
Amy, is there any downside in terms of timing?
Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 26, and that's a placeholder if anything came up, so we would, the committee would have that one meeting, because in order to make the printing deadline, so the school vacation trips it up a little.
And then we meet that night, so we could presumably...
And then we would have to get the warrant committee also to approve.
Right.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, Mr. Dennehy.
Let's say hypothetically it is, $200,000 ends up being the number, so rather than bonding 2757, and using a million of free cash, what would that $200,000, right, so now you're going to bond 2957?
So I'm going to be recused of the bonding part, so if you can get into discussion on that, I'm going to leave the room, but I think, you know, that may be one alternative, another alternative may be just to see if there's any play in these numbers, because that was the clear takeaway from the Finance Committee meeting, that some of these numbers, you know, there may be a little bit of room in some of them.
Ms. Collins?
So, I would suggest you do both if you're going to look at that.
Ms. Collins?
Right, I didn't know if, like, Lower Guile Field does need to be redone, and, but I didn't know if that, that was, if we'd gotten an estimate for the feasibility study, because that just seemed like a lot of money, and I didn't know if maybe it was, if it was a slightly different number, and we knew that, then we could reflect it, and get it, get the feasibility study done at the same time.
It's actually a bigger number, I think, I think it may actually be a bigger number.
Yeah, the back of the envelope number is, it's going to be a million-dollar project.
Right, but the feasibility study.
Yeah, just going on...
Because if we're, I thought that's...
Engineering and...
Oh, okay.
It's about 10%, that was, that was the logic.
Got it, it's 10%, okay, thanks.
Could I just make a point to Mr. Dennehy's question, if, if an additional 200,000 was bonded, we only bond, not we, the Capitol Committee looks at the equipment, if it's five years or less, they tend to recommend it for free cash, there's a couple of things that if it switched to the bonded would be 10 or 15 years, so the impact would be 25,000 a year, maybe, for 10 years, additional debt service, so not significant.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Wells?
I have a question, and I'm putting you on the spot here, do you support the recommendation the committee has written up?
I support the recommendation of a committee, but I also will support the board if they'd like me to ask the Capitol Committee to reconsider. I can't guarantee what they'll do, but I can, I have no problem bringing it to them.
I think what this really comes down to is applying a heightened level of scrutiny towards money that the town is about to spend, and I think that there's nothing wrong with that. Katie is not suggesting that line items are removed wholesale for many of this, simply applying a heightened level of scrutiny, that's all, that's all she's suggesting, I agree with her.
All right, so, I don't know that we need a motion, maybe it's a good idea to have a motion to ask the Capitol Committee to take another look, and perhaps we'll put a number in, and take another look, and see if there's, there's anything they can do up to $200,000, is that something we might want to do?
I'd accept it without a number.
Without a number?
Without a number.
I think that's fair, is that, but you can...
I'd like to convey to the Capitol Committee, this is what we're looking to identify, this amount, and we'd like them to come back to us with...
If you don't apply a target to it, I think it becomes too vague.
I just, well, to your point, Tony, I mean, they've scrutinized so much, this, I mean, I sit on a lot of committees, and I've sat on both sides of that table, I've sat as a department head for many years, and now I sit on a committee, they do their, they really do their work, and it's hard, like...
Yeah, I don't think anyone's disputing that, Richard, like, I'm not trying to, I'm not, I don't want to argue, nobody does, but nobody's disputing that, it's just saying, listen, times are tight, like, can we find something, and we keep coming back to Lower Guile Road as an example.
You want to bring the Park Commissioners in here?
But see, so now it's becoming adversarial, and it doesn't need to be, we're simply making it a suggestion, could you kindly take what you've presented us and look at it again? And I think, given the circumstance and the enormity of what this is, dollars that we will be spending as a town, I think it's a more than reasonable recommendation, that's all. And I think a number needs to be attached to it, because absent a number, you go through the process, you devote the time, you put in the work, and you come back with something that is maybe not in the ballpark of what we're suggesting, so I think a number needs to be attached, you know, an ideal target, and then you see how close you come to meeting that target.
So I'll move that we request that the Capital Improvement Planning Committee reconsider the non-bonded capital recommendation with an eye toward reducing it by approximately $200,000.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any further... Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Four to one. And I, Ms. Dexter.
Well, I just, because when I bring it to them, I want to, is there an appetite on this committee if they come back with a higher bonded recommendation?
Ms. Conlin will need to recuse herself for that.
All right, I apologize.
I'll go to that after Katie leaves, I'll speak to her.
So Katie, why don't you?
I would like to ask the town, the chair of the Capitol Committee, to let the Capitol Committee know about some of these other issues that the board's aware of, you know, that the Capitol Committee's already not aware of, in terms of airplane issues, 40B and other development issues, just so they, so they understand what the rationale for the request is. All right, so I will be recusing.
We'll talk about bonded very briefly, don't go far. Don't go too far. All right, so, so I guess, the good prompt here is Ms. Dexter.
So just from a logistics standpoint, I prefer that you don't vote any of the capital recommendation, and I bring the entire thing back.
I think that's appropriate.
Including the enterprise funds.
I think that's appropriate.
Okay, so that I can just come and we can have one vote of everything.
I think that's appropriate.
Does that sound?
That's appropriate.
Okay.
And, and I will say, to kick off the discussion, personally, I have an appetite for perhaps shifting into bonded, if that makes sense. That's, you know, unless you tell me that's a bad idea.
No, so just one other thing, and I know we've taken a long time, so I want to make it quick, but Mr. Dennehy alluded to the fact that I've been working with the town's financial advisor on the timing of the bond issue to try to smooth out the debt service, because the way the town's historically done it, every two years, we kind of have this peaks and valleys, and with this recommendation of $2.8 million, the projected debt service right now for every, this recommendation, along with what's already been bonded, combined with the already authorized, unissued, will result in debt service for fiscal '21, $120,000 less than fiscal '20. The problem is, when you get to '22, it then goes up $120,000. That is, assuming we issue in August of 2020, which the treasurer has, he doesn't want to do it in August, he wants to do it at a different timing, which could make that swing even larger. So we're working with the financial advisor to find out the best timing of the debt issue to try to smooth that impact out. And there's some things that you can do, like, you can issue, but say, we would like half of the first year's principal paid in the year that we issue, and that kind of helps smooth things out. So I'm still waiting for information on that. So by the time the Capitol Committee meets, I will have that.
Right.
But we are, when the Capitol Committee looks into those things, those are all the kind of things that we take into consideration to make sure that our recommendation doesn't have too large of an impact on the operating side.
Hence why, oh, sorry. Hence why we chose to take a million of free cash because of the bonding issue. And don't forget, we had the fire truck issue, which really had a huge impact on our bonding last year.
Right, that's right.
And that, that falls off in year three, so that's where some of this is coming.
Ms. Collins.
So it, it sounds as if actually working out that smoothing might actually help us in this situation as well. Is that correct?
In?
In, if we do move some things into bonded, that.
It will probably make this a little bit larger, because what happens is you issue in fiscal '21, and the way we historically have done it, the principal doesn't hit till the following year, so that's why you see the spike.
Right, I was just wondering if, if we could smooth that out, if that would actually help us so that it doesn't spike as much.
Yeah, that's what we're trying, yes.
Thanks.
Mr. Dennehy, you have something to add?
No, no, just, I'll end the way I started. I think when people see this at town meeting, after we come back for a recommendation, the theme is quality of life and public safety. There's some public safety issues in here that we need to address. I think the rest of it is quality of life stuff that, that now that I've been sitting in this chair for three years, I've heard loud and clear, you're on the Traffic Mitigation Committee, there's some quality of life issues there, that's, that's part of this. We heard from the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, other committees in town that are doing yeoman's work, parks commissioners, this is stuff that I've been gathering for the last three years, and I think, I think it really makes sense. And it is, we have tapped the brakes a little bit. People need to understand that, that we understand there's, there's some larger projects coming, coming down the pike, and this is stuff that, last year, as we, last year, we considered it must haves versus, you know, things, a wish list, if you will. This is more quality-like, public safety-type stuff that I think town meeting will appreciate.
All right, other comments, questions? Thank you.
I just think you need to be prepared that if the committee votes not to do it, we're going to have to be prepared, we're going to be faced to deal with this again.
Yeah.
Which is a very real, would you agree with me, it's a very real possibility? I mean, there's really, they brought up their sleeves, and as they do all the time.
And we really appreciate it. I, I think that we didn't realize all of these things would be coming at us at this point, and, and we'll see what happens, and we'll move forward regardless of what happens.
That's right.
Great, thank you, Amy.
Do you need me for a peg?
Yes, yes. Yes, you're going to be, you're going to be up right away.
This will be quick.
Yes. Katie, you can come back. Please join us. Item 12, annual town meeting articles. The first one is the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund article. I think this is a, as suggested, a boilerplate article, but Ms. Dexter, why don't you walk us through it?
So, do you recall?
Before you begin, so just, just so we know, the article, I mean, the warrant is still open, because we didn't close it after we added the planning board article. So the warrant is open, and we can consider these articles. Ms. Dexter.
So last May, Annual Town Meeting 2019, there was an article, number 36, that, that established this Peg Cable Related Fund. At that time, the legislation, the Mass General Lodge, Chapter 44, Section 53F and three quarters, requires an annual appropriation that can be spent out of that fund. So basically, the expenses come from the fees out of that fund and are paid to MPEG, or Milton Access TV, for their operations. So we need, annually, we need to make an appropriation.
And we keep a piece of that. The town keeps a piece of that.
Very small piece of it, yes, very small piece.
But in that fund now, there's about $500,000, is that?
Yeah, it's about $450,000. The difficulty with this, with this article is you can never appropriate more than is in the fund at the date of the appropriation, which is really tricky, because all of the fees that we pay MPEG are based on next year's receipts.
Right.
So it's going to be tricky to figure out what that dollar amount is, because you can't appropriate future revenue.
Right.
Future receipts, it won't allow you to do that. So this was overlooked when I was working on the draft of the current warrant, I'm like, oh, fell through the cracks, so.
Comments or questions on this article? I will only say that there is a possibility that the money that is in this fund could be used, may be used, if we go down the road of municipal broadband. And it is a significant amount, and if we figure out how to use it, that might be something that we look at down the line, so, if we decide to go that route, so. So do we have a motion to include this in the warrant?
Mr. Chair, I'll make an article, a motion to include, do we have an article number for it, do we know it?
No, we haven't ordered them yet.
Just, this would be the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund article.
What he said, what the chair said. I'll make a motion to include the Peg Access Fund in the annual town warrant.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
I think you are done. Thank you very much for staying late. Item 12B, the Community Preservation Act, I think we have our assistant town planner, Allison, Allison, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know your last name.
Quinn.
Quinn, thank you. I'm also going to invite Tom Callahan up for discussion, if there are any questions on the Community Preservation Act. Tom has a lot of experience statewide. Tom, what's your, what's your position with the, in this area, just so, just so, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Right, so professionally, I'm the executive director of the Massachusetts Affordable Housing Alliance in Dorchester, which has worked on Community Preservation Act. Matter of fact, was part of the legislative coalition back in the late '90s that led to its passage in 2000. I also serve as the volunteer chair of the Community Preservation Coalition, which is the steering committee that oversees and provides support to the 176 communities that have adopted CPA.
So Allison, I believe, has a presentation for us, so I will turn it over to you, Allison, Ms. Allison Quinn.
It's different, do you?
It's the one that's already open, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
So we, we put together like a very brief overview of how community preservation works. I did work for community preservation in Boston before coming here for about a year and a half, so I have a little bit of background knowledge. Generally, Hillary and Jen helped me kind of capture, just like snapshots, so you guys get more information on how it would be applied in Milton. So we start off with a little visual, I don't, can you guys see that behind you? I'm not sure if this is perfect, but, so this is the intersection of, is it Adams and?
Eldery Corner. I think, Adams and Center and Pleasant.
So it's publicly owned, it's held by the town or Parks Department, and you can go to the next slide. This, I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with Charles Gate East, over by the Fenway, Kenmore. This is being done with community preservation money in Boston, and it was, it was like Hardscape, where they tried to put the highway at one point, and then it just, they, you know, the neighborhood stopped it, and it has just been cement blight forever. So the Charles Gate Alliance put in money, and that application was reviewed, and they awarded $1 million, and that is seed money for them to move forward with this, and it's actually a really cool kind of retains water, and we tried to show how it's graded, but it's one example of how CPA money can be applied. So we tried to look at some of the things in Milton, and historic preservation is a great tool for community preservation funding. Milton has a lot of historic assets that are really worth protecting, and the way it works is if a project is awarded money, a permanent easement restriction is placed upon it, and in the case of historic preservation, that funding would preserve what that funding award was going towards, so the envelope, it wouldn't really do interior preservation, but the exterior envelope would be protected. Tom, do you want to add anything, or? He's a little bit more knowledge of Milton than I do. A good example might be Suffolk Resolves or the Forbes Mansion. You could also, if you wanted to look at something like the Forbes Mansion down the road, if you wanted, you can do like a bonded project, so you could do part of it being historic preservation, part of it being open space, part of it being community housing, and that would cover all three of those buckets. And when I say buckets, for each funding round, you're required to put 10% aside for each three categories, historic preservation, open space, or some kind of, like, you could fund trees if you guys wanted to, I heard that earlier. We gave away a lot of money for new plantings as part of the conservation effort, community housing. This particular slide is, shows the East Milton Firehouse, and the slide on the right is a historic preservation of the facade of the firehouse with a new use on the side, and I believe that those are micro affordable units on the right. This is at, I think it's 68 Church Street. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Shell House.
Yep, that's how it, I, it may look worse than, yeah.
The bus isn't in the picture.
It's, so what we tried to do is capture what possibly, like, an elderly assisted living space would look on that site, because another great feature of community preservation is the opportunity to acquire property. So Hillary helped me with the slides, I'm not really that tech savvy working on it, but generally, this just helps appreciate how the money comes in. We base this on 1% with $100,000 taken off of each property off of the top, and then we try to allow for about 500 exemptions. So that bigger bubble is the CPA revenue, and then the state match, and we were given information after checking with the coalition that they estimate that the match is about 30%. Does that sound right to you, Tom?
Yeah, that's probably a conservative estimate for next year. It might be a little higher.
It might be higher, yeah.
But, yeah, they just, the legislature just passed a increase in the fees, the recording fees at the registered deeds all across the state, and that will go, that increase will go to fund a higher state match than has been available.
So this is our number based on the 1%, extracting that $100,000 per residential household, and with an estimated 500 exemptions. The calculation on the right shows where you would be 10 years from now in funding that could have been applied for CPA. And this shows you what we've lost, roughly $8.7 million that could have gone towards projects in Milton, and that value wasn't captured. And Milton isn't the first place that didn't adopt it the first time around. They've made some, some remedies to the regulations, I think they manage it a little bit better It's real, it, no one's taken the option to opt out of community preservation once, once they've adopted it. So we tried to come up with some clever little visual aids to go along with the narrative. Pagoda Circle over in the West Milton neighborhood, it's cute, and it's got a lot of trees and shade in the back, and something on the right could be a pocket pack. That's what it could look like with a, with a little bit of CPA funding. And this is all process-related. So if the select board approves it, it goes on to the ballot. And then, I think, where do we put, up to, oh, we put it 1%, we kind of left this open-ended a little bit. And then, from there, if it does get adopted, next, you'll be allocated a budget, you'll have to come up with a community preservation committee. One of the things I think that makes us attractive to residents is that it's residential, it's driven by the people who live in Milton. It's projects that, but not for, wouldn't, wouldn't happen without CPA funding. It could be, you know, part, funding part of the lower field at Guile. We can't use it for turf, but we can pay for the capital construction, we can pay to have the turf installed, we get, you know, those are the type of, types of features that CPA money can be used for. And then I tried to show, that's Max Ullin Rink on the left, and CPA could do that on the right. And that's existing, and then the next slide just kind of shows you how transformative CPA can be for towns and cities. I think that's it, right? That's my last slide.
Just a quick question.
Thank you, Allison.
Of course.
How did Boston, I'm familiar with how we attempted it here the first time. How did Boston enact it, was just, was the mayor able to enact it himself, or?
You know, it was a, it was a vote of the voters, so it was on the ballot in November of 2016. That was the second time.
For them as well?
Yeah, Boston put it on the very first year they could have, in 2001. That vote took place six weeks after. That vote took place six weeks after September 11th and was not an ideal time.
Right.
To be.
Asking for.
Asking for anything, given the country's mood there. So that failed in 2001 and it, it didn't get back to the ballot in Boston until 2016. But it had tremendous political support. Mayor Walsh came out early in the campaign and endorsed it. I can't remember the exact vote, but I think 11 of the 13, 10 or, 10 or 11 of the 13 councilors voted to put it in front of voters and it won with 74% of the vote. It wasn't close. 74% of the vote. So it was, it's, I think, the second highest margin of victory in CPA history of any, I think Somerville probably has the record with 76% or whatever. But, but it, it was an impressive vote of confidence by the voters of Boston. We're also in Milton, with the exception of Dedham, we're, we're completely surrounded by CPA communities. Quincy, Randolph, obviously Boston, Canton, all have it, Braintree. So, so we, and many of them have had it for a number of years now.
Comments or questions?
So it would have to form a PAC, correct? Because it's considered, is it considered like an override? It's considered like a PAC committee? Would have to, not, wouldn't, couldn't be asked, but you'd have to have a PAC to fund it and, I mean, you need a pro, correct? I mean, to help make a move.
Yeah, typically what happens in communities, if it is added to the ballot is, you know, a yes committee would, would form. And that would be a private committee as you, you know, as you have to file with the Office of Campaign and Political Finance and, but similar to how yes, override, yes committees and have formed over the years. So in 2012, there was, there was a yes committee. A number of us were part of.
I think the process for us is we, we would vote whether to include it on the warrant for town meeting and town meeting would vote whether to put it on the ballot.
We're still open.
What's that?
The warrant's still open.
It's still open. It's still open. Other comments and questions? Ms. Conlon.
I guess I do. So what you're, what's being proposed would be a 1% surcharge rather than a 1.5% surcharge, which was the 2012.
That would be my, that would be my recommendation to the warrant committee. The way the article is drafted and it's been drafted before is to see how much, is usually the article doesn't specify the percentage, but we would recommend to the warrant committee that their recommendation should be the 1%. And that's what, that's what the, that's what, that's what Allison's presentation was based on. You know, the way I see this is it is a tax. It's a 1% tax, but it's an entry fee. It's an entry fee to get into the room to be able to use our money. The way I look at this is all those other communities around us are in a room and there are stacks of cash on the table and they're all spreading around the cash. And there's a, there's a stack of cash that says Milton. And all of those other communities are using our money to build fire stations and parks and affordable housing. And we're outside the room looking in the window because we didn't pay the entrance fee. So, so anyway, I.
If it, if it helps a little bit, so I, I looked at the numbers, so the average, I looked at the average assessed value of a property in Milton. I backed out the $100,000 and it's approximately $12 a week on the average for, you know, whatever the median house value is. I think it was 783 or something like that. It would cost someone $12 a week.
Ms. Conlon.
So just procedurally before I come in, I think because town meeting voted to approve this article before, but it was at 1.5%. If we wanted, we could go out to the ballot again without approval. But if we wanted to do something other than 1.5%, we need to go back to town meeting? Is that correct?
Well, the, the article last time specified beginning in fiscal year 2013.
13, correct.
So, so the article would have to be a little different. So I think we had.
So we have to go to town.
We have to go to town meeting. We have to.
All right. I, I will support putting this forward to town meeting. And I was the co-chair of the yes campaign in 2012 and worked with Tom Callahan and John Cronin was the other co-chair and Mary Noble, who's here, who very, did a lot of work on the campaign. Generally, I support the CPA. I think the challenge for Milton is always that we have so many operating overrides over the years. And we know we've got coming up, we're going to have a debt exclusion override on the fire stations or we're going to have one on the schools at some point. So if you can tie the CPA into that, that the funding through, if, if the CPA were to pass that the funding could help with the school building project, help with the fire station project, I think, I think that's worth explaining and we're going to need to go through a lot of detail on that. But I think the, the challenge for the voters, Tom meeting has, you know, has passed this the last time pretty easily. It was, it was, it was the voters who kind of silently rejected it. We were very dejected on the presidential election night 2012. I think there's going to have to be a lot of education with this to show how it can help the fire and school building projects. And, you know, we probably are going to be going off another operating override within the next couple of years at some point or, you know, in the, within the next, in the foreseeable future. So with, going to the voters on these different debt exclusions and operating overrides, I think makes CPA a little more challenging for us than it does for a community. And there are some communities who haven't had operating overrides. So I think it's, a lot of it's going to be voter education and, and explaining the exemptions and low income or senior exemption. So all of that's going to have to really be explained and there's going to have to be an educational effort at town meeting and especially to the voters. But I'm, I would, I would support putting it forward to town meeting.
So let me, let me just say, oh, Mr. Wells.
No, you go first.
So I was just going to say, the parks are nice. The pictures are nice. To me, this is all about fire stations and secondarily affordable housing for seniors. Because this is a mechanism that we can use to help fund our fire stations. Two of them are historic buildings. And so we could use these funds to help pay for those. It wouldn't pay for all of it, but it would help pay for it. And it would limit the need for an operating override. And this is the kind of a, this is the kind of a tax, tax, other than operating override.
Debt exclusion.
Or a, or a debt exclusion. This is the kind of a tax that number one, you're going to get your match from the state. So you're going to get some, some money that you wouldn't get through an override or a debt exclusion. And number two, this is the kind of tax that we can exclude low and moderate income seniors and low income residents. And we can't do that with a debt exclusion or an override. And so to me, this satisfies all those, all those, all those purposes. It fits all of those, all the things we want to do. We want to pay for our fire stations. We don't want to overload our seniors with too, too many taxes. And we want to get in the room and get that cash that we're entitled to get. And, and, and I guess I would also say, you know, I was struck two weeks ago when we had our meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust. And, you know, in 1999, poverty among seniors in Milton was about 4.3%. In 2015, it was, I think it was about 5.5%. In 2019, 19 or 17, poverty among seniors in Milton rose to 9.3%. So that kind of rise in the poverty level among seniors tells me that that's a problem, that we have a problem. And we need to do something about that problem. One is the circuit breaker that we'll talk about later. And the second is affordable housing for seniors. And this is a way that we can, that we can use funds, including the matching funds, once we deal with the fire stations. I think the fire stations are number one, but we can also use these funds to, 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 to fund affordable housing for seniors. So, so to me, and it, and we can do it without burdening low to moderate income seniors with this tax. So, so to me, it's, it's, it's an important thing to do and I've probably spoken too much, but.
No, I, I have a question to your comments, if that's okay. So, did I hear you say 500 exemptions?
We, we based it on 500 exemptions and as I previously stated, I am no mathlete. So Tom, just help me figure out the math. What, what is it a week?
I had previously figured it out. So I, we're just doing some quick math here, but I think it's the, a 1% surcharge for the average homeowner in Milton would be about $80 a year. So it's, it's a dollar 31 a week or so.
I was going to say 12 a week was kind of.
I was backing it out wrong.
The library resulted in like $25 a year.
The numbers I came up, I think it was $83 per year. So that's a dollar 31 or whatever, but maybe.
Yeah, I took two languages just so I didn't have to take them.
Seniors are exempt?
We can exempt low to moderate income seniors.
Okay, okay. So you apply for the exemption and then we would grant the exemption?
That's right.
That's right, yeah.
And you figure out 500? You could have as many as 500. I.
We can also exempt low income residents.
Okay.
Yeah, that was based on what we felt was the, the model for Milton as far as exemptions went.
So I, I just think, and I, clearly public safety, you know, is near and dear to me. And fortunately, if there's any, maybe this can help a little bit with the fire project. And I agree 100% in the photo things, but I, I even think about issues like this green space issue in East Milton. The citizens are paying it, but they're paying out of their, you know, they're, they're funding it themselves. That's something we could probably put some of this towards. Because the one good thing about CPA, it's going to be with you hopefully in perpetuity and for long, it's always designed. So I just have one question for Tom. It's the only negative comment that, I, I supported Tom when he fought for this in the beginning, Tom Hurley, when he brought in, even though it wasn't doing anything for the police department, it was far as a resident. I thought I heard once that since Boston joined, it drained the pot. Am I, is, am I correct? Did I hear that?
So, yeah, well, believe me, as part of, in my work, had, as, since I was part of the Boston campaign, we heard that a lot.
Okay.
And wearing my statewide hat and my Boston hat in that case, that was the fear. Obviously, the reality is Boston raises about $20 million or just under that locally. And therefore their match is the largest match of any community in the state. Cambridge previously was the high, but once Boston got in. Our argument, which I'm pleased to say turned out to be correct, was that Boston getting in would be the impetus for the state legislature to act after many, many years of inaction. What had happened is the first communities in for the first five, six years got 100% state matches. That was never really intended, but that was the reality because they were the early adopters. That match started to decline and steadily declined for the next 10, 12 years. We had, we, when I say that, the Community Preservation Coalition had been filing legislation for about 10 years to address that declining state match and get more state resources in. Obviously, 170 communities adopting something versus.
Right.
50 or 40 at the beginning. There was a mismatch in, in level of support. And they, they acted last year. They raised the $20 fees at the Registry of Deeds to $50. And that will fund its estimated, typically about $26 million on average was coming in from the state. And now if you more than double that, you're going to be well over 50, 60 million coming in from that one source. In addition, the legislature has, the governor and legislature have put in, there's no guarantee this would continue, but has put in another $10 million some years in additional surplus funds at the end of the budget year. But I think the reality, the political realities are strong. 176 communities, which is the majority of the state, representing 62% of the state's population because we have now some of the cities that have adopted it. So, so the majority of Massachusetts residents live in a CPA community now. And that makes the politics in Beacon Hill to continue to support this and keep the match, a healthy match, I think, very favorable. There's no guarantees, as you all know, in politics, there's no guarantees. But, but I think it's increasingly a favorable outlook for the legislature to support this in, going forward as well. So that's why the, the match is projected to be up from, I think it was around 18, 19% this year. And it will go to probably north of 30% next year.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to include the Community Preservation Act article for the annual town meeting in April. And I'd also, just a caveat, it doesn't have to be included in the motion. I think it might be prudent of us to ask Allison to maybe, we be proactive and have her go and meet with the warrant committee before we even get there. Because just the educational aspect of CPA, I think it may, make our, may the door be open a lot wider by the time we get there, or you get there, actually, to present it. That's my only thought. So that would be my motion.
Motion's been made, seconded and made for the discussion. I will just say that to the point of how it's funded, and I don't know if it's been clear, but it may be, may be, but this is funded through recording fees from people who buy and sell their houses. And those fees go into this fund.
Including in Milton.
Including those fees from Milton. And those fees are not going into Milton right now. They're going to all those other communities. That's that cash that's on the table that everyone else is spreading around except for us. And so that's, I, I find that a little galling, frankly. So anyway, any.
Well, I just have one thought. And, and I'm not opposed to supporting this article to be included in the warrant. So I want to let you know that's my position. But help me understand, I want to play devil's advocate for a second, Tom. If this is such a no brainer, what's the, what's the counter argument to this? Why didn't this succeed, you know, as a ballot question to that as well?
I think it's to Katie's point. It's a tax.
It's a tax.
I mean, every tax issue, I mean, I don't have to tell you guys, every, every tax issue is always controversial. It probably should be controversial, right? We're taxpayers. We care about where the money goes.
Sure.
And, and it, you know, to Katie's point earlier about making the case, I think the burden is always on the proponents of a, of an increase to, to make the case. And, you know, we have to take it, I would take it, I don't think we, I did a good enough job, along with, you know, the campaign has a burden to try to convince voters why this is positive for the town. And I think that's, you know, there was an organized no campaign in 2012. And I have, as chair of the statewide CPC, the Community Preservation Coalition, have an interesting vantage point. There is subliminism when there is an organized no campaign. It makes it very difficult.
Sure, of course.
Because, you know, the default mechanism on the tax issue for most voters is a no. If they get confused about where, where the money, and it was a new issue to Milton. Allison said this, many, many communities have been successful in the second, some on the third time. But, but it often takes the education of a campaign, even a unsuccessful campaign, but it, it helps educate the electorate in town that, hmm, this is something I maybe previously never heard of and now I am a little more aware of. And maybe the second time around, we have a better chance with that voter of convincing him or her to be a yes vote. So it's, you know, I've been involved in a number of these campaigns. They're, they're, including many, many school and public safety overrides in my 25 years in town. I think I've been part of all of those campaigns. And they're always challenging. And I just think CPA is no different in that. But as Chair said, this is unique because you can exempt low income homeowners and low and moderate income senior homeowners completely. You know, not just a partial exemption. You can completely exempt them.
So the funding of it.
Which is, which is different than any other tax.
The funding of it is tied directly to the recording fees.
Yeah.
From real estate conveyancing, okay?
That's right.
The mortgage, the deed, the MLC, whatever it might be.
Yeah.
So, so that's a sliding scale. That's difficult to predict from one year to the next, the volume of real estate that's going to be bought and sold.
Well.
So as opposed to say a pie that's been baked and there's a figure and it's static and it doesn't change.
Yeah, although.
Because what strikes me as problematic about, I'm just learning, again.
That's true.
I'm not opposed to submitting this and voting in favor of it, but there's 176 towns that participate. Your goal would be to have all 351 citizen towns in the Commonwealth participate. But the more towns participate, the less money's up for grabs.
On the match side.
On the match side.
On the match side.
And it's also difficult to predict, I think, what, what, what's up for grabs because we don't know. It's directly tied to something you can't predict. Am I right? Like I feel like I'm missing something. Like it's almost too good to be true.
So, so you, so you can predict it. And you can predict it, it turns out you can predict it pretty accurately. So I was part of the campaign to this, for the statewide legislative passage of this in 98, 99. And it eventually passed. Governor Salucci signed it in, in the year 2000. The prediction that we made at the time is we thought the, those recording fees would generate $26 million per year. We hit it on the nose. That's exactly what has produced on average over the 20-year history of CPA. Yes, a few years it's been slightly below that, but not much, like 24 million, 25 million. Yes, a few years it's been slightly below that, but not much, like 24 million, 25 million. There were a few huge refinancing years where we collected 36 million and north of that even. So there were a few positive blip ups, but we thought a $26 million number was reasonably conservative, and it's turned out that at the old $20 fee, that is actually correct. So you're right, there are some, there are some, there's some volatility to the mortgage market
Yes.
That will cause some fluctuation, but if you, if you estimate it on the conservative side, you generally don't get caught. And we, and so, so that's been true. The problem was, we went from six communities adopting in the first year to 176, and that fee never was adjusted until this year. So that was an exact reaction that the legislature had to say, okay, we want to provide a better match, we want to be a better state partner to those 176 communities, and now we've gone from a match that was estimated to be, if we did nothing, that they would have been talking about 11%, 11% state match this year, and now we're expected to be slightly north of 30%.
So those recording fees that increased January 1st of this year are directly related to this, and increased, okay?
That's exactly right. That was as a result of Chairman Michaelitz, actually, Aaron Michaelitz from Boston, who's the Chair of the House Ways and Means, was the champ, the lead champion. He ushered that legislation through the House, and Senator Cream from Newton was the champion in the Senate, and that legislation passed last year, went into effect, as you said, this year, and just in time for Milton to start collecting money if we pass it next year.
So it almost sounds like, it's kind of a PR problem, it's just what you call it, maybe if, if the, you might use the term entry fee.
Well, let's, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's a marketing issue. To me, I think you need to be honest and say, look, it's a tax.
It is a tax.
But it's, but it's, but it's a tax that's going to build fire stations, and it's going to exempt seniors and low incomes, and low and moderate income seniors, and it's going to create, it's going to get a match from the state. So, so it's, if you're going to have to pay for fire stations and pay for affordable housing for seniors, this is the way to do it, seems to me.
Ian, though, Ian, I mean, even the issues, and fields, and kids, and I mean-
Affordable housing.
Those are the things that's going to be able to help, you know? So, look, I think all of us at this table realize that the, you know, the citizens of Milton are not an ATM machine, that we can just, but, and just go back to the color code thing, this is something where we can enhance the quality of life. I mean, you saw the, a resident wrote me an email about this yesterday, and I responded, you know, why did we do it in 16? Well, 16, we had a $4 million operation. Operational overrides, as Katie knows, is hard. They're hard to move, and we have to have them every, hope we never have, and maybe this helps that we don't have to have an operation, you know, maybe, you know, just, I've talked enough about it, I'm fired.
The only thing I will add, Tony, the difference between now and '12 is the minimum that you can, you can, the minimum entry fee is 1%. In '12, the request for one and a half.
Yes, it was.
And so now we're going for the minimum amount to get in the room.
And Boston went through a similar, you know, in 2001, that campaign we referred to earlier was a 2%, we went for 2%, when we put it back on the ballot in 2015, 16, rather, it was a 1%. So I think, yeah, I think in retrospect, maybe it was an overreach, and we should have gone for 1% in 2012. But, but yeah.
Motion's been made, no, Ms. Collins.
I just want to add, since Tom mentioned that proponents have to take the blame for not getting it passed, and so-
I realize, I realize.
But nobody worked harder than Tom.
Katie and I worked together, so-
Nobody worked harder than Tom.
I take the blame, Katie, you?
No, no, but you, but that's why I'm responding to you, you said that, but I want to say for the record, nobody worked harder than you did, so the group collectively didn't get it passed, but, but it certainly wasn't your fault, Tom.
Well, thank you.
Think positive now, let's think positive, let's think positive.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Allison.
Hey, can we get, Michael, can we get Allison on that, get it before the warrant committee, sooner versus later, so maybe with Tom as well to kind of put the primer on the walls?
Certainly, I did happen to bump into Mr. O'Donnell at Town Hall-
Okay.
Who's the head of our historic-
No, I know, well-
Commission, he's all in favor. Had a discussion with Scott McKay last year about this, and I'm confident his opinion has not changed, so I'm sure the box commissioners would, would back this as well.
The neat thing is, they get to be, if it succeeded in Milton, and the CPC, as Allison referred to, that got set up, the Community Preservation Committee, the heads of Parks and Rec, the heads of the Housing Authority and Historic would be on, would be guaranteed a seat on the CPC, and then you, you would have four at-large seats, up to four at-large seats to fill for that Citizens Committee.
We could put the Fire Building Committee Chair on that if we wanted.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. You'd have the complete flexibility to appoint four others.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 12C, we have the article for the circuit breaker, and I think this is, this is really just an explanation. We had, we have approved this article, there was a letter in the Milton Times about what we could do for seniors, and what exemptions we could provide for seniors, and I think, Mike, 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 you might want to embellish this, but, but I think what we have in the article that we've already approved will allow, with respect to the circuit breaker, will allow, will allow us to heighten the exemptions for seniors.
Correct, and lower the interest rate.
And lower the interest rate.
Right.
We didn't, now, in the article, we didn't specify an amount, but it's something that we can, that we can argue for with the warrant committee, in terms of what those numbers should be, so, Ms. Collins.
Well, I was wondering how that would, the Board of Assessors was proposing that be handled, I think you met with Bob Bushway?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and this just gets the ball rolling, right? I think the understanding is that the warrant committee could set a rate lower than what's currently 8%. It's, it's unattractive right now, I don't have the number of people that are involved in this at this time, residents, but it's, it's minimal.
Right, well-
It's not very attractive at the current scenario.
Right, it's not commensurate with the interest rate environment at the moment, so, so I guess I was just wondering, would the Board of Assessors give some guidance, or who, yeah?
It's my understanding that they left it the way it was written, so that it could be interpreted and-
By, by the warrant committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
They, I think the warrant committee would make a recommendation, so we could go, we could make a recommendation to the warrant committee on what that, you know, what that exemption and what the interest rate should be, and when we present to the warrant committee. We could do that.
I just, I, I feel as if we could need a little due diligence on that, in order to understand what, what would make sense for residents, and also the town as a whole, so that we could balance those interests.
Do you have a number in mind? No, do you have it?
I don't, I don't, I, you know, I just, I, we put it on the agenda just to get people thinking about it, because, because I thought it was a very timely and helpful letter, and you don't like to, you know, you don't want to always respond to the media, but, but this was, I thought, very topical, very important, particularly given, you know, the plight of poverty among seniors in Milton.
And the chief appraiser has a wealth of information of surrounding communities and what their numbers look like.
Okay.
And could testify to the warrant committee when it's presented, or we could, we could have him here to give some more information on it, but this basically gets the ball rolling that you can change this circuit breaker algorithm.
Okay.
All right. Item 12D, Fire Building Committee, I believe we have a, they want to remove the article.
We have a motion to remove this out from this town meeting, obviously, Brian and Dan are working very hard with Amy in lining up timeline with Article 41, to keep it in line here. So the thinking is, there's a little bit of a bigger window, so we push this off, which helps line the numbers up, because as you know, the bigger numbers come in the future years, so I believe they would be coming to us, are we looking at January, are we looking at October, have we even decided?
I don't think we're looking yet.
All right, so it'll be that meeting, whenever it is, I've told them it could be prepared for October, but it may very well be December or January, like it was this year, and they've agreed to it, so I'll make the motion to remove the article submitted by the Fire Station Building Committee from the warrant for the May 2020 annual town meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, Ms. Collins.
But I do want to clarify, we talked, when Susan Galvin was in not too long ago, we talked about the fact that she's going to be asking to postpone the October town meeting because of the presidential election, you're only voting, so-
They're fine with that.
So we'd have to schedule for another time, it just wouldn't be October.
They're okay with that.
If we were to, assuming we were, I think we were generally amenable to her request.
Yes, I think that's right, I think that's right.
So you want to go the day after the presidential election?
That might be a little too soon for her.
That's right. All right, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have next the electronic delivery of the town meeting warrant, I know there's been some back and forth on this, I'm not sure what we have to vote on tonight, if anything, with respect to this.
Didn't we vote this already once, and we got, is this?
We did, we've, it's on the warrant, but it may be with respect to the recommendation, Ms. Collins.
Well, we voted to submit it, but then at the last meeting, I volunteered to work with Jennifer McCullough in the office, who had done all the research for this article, so, so she and Mr. Denny and I met, and I think it was Jennifer put this handout together. So this is a notice that will go out to all the town meeting members and to the general public that subscribes to the email blast, just letting them know that this article is being considered in May. These are the changes that would be made, and if people have comments or questions to, you know, if someone is concerned about not receiving a paper copy, this notice sets out ways that they could receive it, where it would be available online, some paper copies at Town Hall and other locations, so it's really just letting people know about the article and asking if they want to, if they have a question or they have a comment, they can reach Jennifer in the office, so it's really an information sheet that isn't, she's included in the materials tonight.
That's great. And thank you to Member Conlon, we re-refined it, the question was, how do we guide it to the, how does this board guide it to the warrant committee so that they have a better perspective on it? So, you know, what if you take 10,000 that are printed and mailed and turn that into potentially 500, where you give one to every town meeting member mailed, and then you present others that are available at the Council on Aging, the library, and then others can request them, and the cost savings associated go with that. So this notice, if you will, will be available on the web for those that want to take a look at it, and be sent to the, all of those that Madam Clark has on file with email addresses, so I appreciate you, all your help on this. Katie?
Jennifer McCullough did all the work, so we need to thank her.
You think she's home watching? I doubt it.
All right, so there is a topic with respect to the articles before we close the warrant that could not be reasonably anticipated prior to tonight's meeting, or prior to the agenda being set, because the School Building Committee voted on Monday night to withdraw its funding article from the May warrant. The reason for that is, the School Building Committee is going to apply for funding from, if approved by this board and the School Committee, the School Building Committee will apply for funding with the School Building Authority in April. Given the timing we learned, this committee learned, of the School Building Authority process, there'll be no decision on that until December. So the School Building Committee decided that, given that we don't know whether we'll be getting any funding until December, it doesn't make sense to go out and ask for money unless we know exactly, roughly how much we're going to need, and in addition, the committee determined that, that the $40,000 that's already been appropriated for that committee is enough to get it through initial planning stages with a consultant. So, so the idea from the School Building Committee is that perhaps we would come back in for the, in the town meeting in May of 2021, after getting the feedback from the School Building Authority, and actually having a more clear idea of what the funding, funding needs will be. So, so I will, based on all that, I will move to remove the article submitted by the School Building Committee from the warrant for May 2020 annual town meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion or questions after I just roned on for a while? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to close the warrant.
Make a motion to close the warrant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Item 13, discussion of the Appointed Town Treasurer referendum, excuse me, we've discussed this on two occasions previously, I believe in September, and then briefly at our last meeting. The Town Government Study Committee has, has requested or suggested, proposed that the Appointed Town Treasurer referendum be included in the, on the ballot for our April election, and so, we, we don't need to make a decision on this technically until 35 days before the election, however, it seems to me we've already discussed this, and in order to, given that it's election season, give candidates, or potential candidates, some certainty about what the treasurer position would be, and also to give our treasurer some certainty about the, what the treasurer's position would be, both in his current work and in, in the election cycle, it would be prudent for us to make a decision one way or the other on this, if we can, sooner rather than later. So that's the preface. Comments, questions?
Well, I think we're going to discuss it, maybe we put it on at a later meeting at an earlier time where people have an interest in it can come. It's kind of late in the night here, I mean, it's late, just to be fair. I just, I, my own personal thoughts on it, but I just think that'd be a fair thing to do, but.
I tend to agree with Richard, I'm sensitive to your point, but if we include this as an agenda item for the next meeting two weeks from now, I don't think that that's going to stand in the way of the points that you raised, which are valid ones.
Fair enough.
Which is, you know, as you enter election season, people want to know, but two weeks, I don't think is going to, we can give it the attention it deserves.
Fair enough.
Frankly, that's my, my thinking.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, if I might, just point of order, it has to be in the clerk's hands 35 days prior to the election.
Which would be March-
Late March.
Late March.
I believe the election's the 28th.
Late March, so, but our next meeting is the-
26.
So, you know, let's, let's, I think we can commit to making a decision one way or the other on the 26th, I think we can do that, we'll include it early on the agenda and make sure that we, we make a decision one way or the other. Is that fair?
Love it.
Okay, all right, so we'll defer on that, does anyone want to speak to it now, or do we want to wait until we have our?
I want to speak to it that night.
Okay.
I definitely will want to speak to it.
Great, all right, great. I made my, my views known, they haven't changed.
I know, not either.
Yeah, so.
I made my views known at the last meeting also, they haven't changed.
I don't think I was here, I don't think I was at the last, because I wasn't here for this, but I-
Right, right, right.
But my views have not changed from where they were a year ago.
Okay. All right, item 14, reapportment of the Privacy Officer.
I'm moved to reappoint Paige Eppolino, Assistant Town Administrator, HR Director of 525 Canton Avenue, to serve as the town's privacy officer with the term expiring February 28th, 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye, but can I ask a stupid question? I know a lot of things about this town, what does the privacy officer do?
It's part of her role as the human resource director.
Okay, I get it, okay, all right. I vote aye, all right.
All those in, everyone was unanimous, right? Okay. Item 15, reapportment of the Group Insurance Advisory-
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to reappoint Paige Eppolino, William Murphy Jr., Joseph Fahey, Michael Collins, Margaret Gibbons, Kerry Devon, Jason Shera, Robert Mallon, Dean Alexander, Jan Pa, and Mary Fitzgerald, all of 525 Canton Avenue, to the Group Insurance Advisory Committee with terms expiring February 28th of 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, only question is, Margaret, is she going to continue on that?
We haven't followed through on that.
Okay.
I apologize, yeah.
We can come back to it.
We can, we can appoint her, and then we can-
Or designate.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 16, reapportment of the Traffic Commission.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Marion Driscoll, Foddy Margaret Road, Lee Tomer, 58 Aberdeen Road, and Stephen Geist with 50 Canton Avenue, to the Traffic Commission with terms expiring February 28th, 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item 17, approval of the Greeting Page for the March 3, 2020 Presidential Primary Warrant.
Almost that we approve the March 3, 2020 Presidential Primary Warrant, it's actually not just the Greeting Page, we need to approve the whole warrant. It actually is only a one pager in this case.
You want to change it, you make, so you make-
Yeah, so I just made a motion that we would approve the-
Second, second.
March 3, 2020 Presidential Primary Warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item 18, a grant, Grants to the Health Department.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve a grant to the Health Department, which is the acceptance of $3,000 AFDO Managed Retail Program Standards Grant Program, and the acceptance of $2,400 Retail Food Safety Inspection Modernization Grant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item 19, Approval of One-Day Liquor Licenses.
Wow. I'll do this. Oh, go ahead. You want to do it? Go ahead.
Go ahead, you're faster.
Madam, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve one-day liquor licenses for the Milton Club, February 15 for the Castello Engagement Party, the Milton Arts Center, February 15, 2020 for Comedy Night, Milton Arts Center, February 21, 2020 for Trivia Night, the Usses Estate on February 28 for concert, St. Elizabeth Parish on February 29 for their Irish, 2020 for their Irish St. Patrick's Night, the MB Wakefield Estate on March 7, 2020 for the Blue Hills Winter Soup Fest, the Milton Arts Center on March 14, 2020 for St. Patrick's Day Party, the Usses Estate on March 15, 2020 for concert, and the Milton Arts Center for on March 20, 2020 for Trivia Night.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 20, Approval of Meeting Minutes.
Move to approve the meeting minutes from January 22, 2020 as written.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 21, Future Meeting Dates. On February 26, we are going to meet, and we will have, early on the agenda, the Treasurer Referendum question. We also will have the Conservation Commission in attendance, and then we will be meeting in our normal second Wednesdays in March, on the 11th and the 25th. Item 22, The Town Administrator's Report.
Just one question, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes.
Is the EPA presentation, is that on the Potsdam River?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
It's a joint meeting with the Conservation Commission. EPA and DEP officials will be here to present. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Couple of things, just while we're talking about voting. Early voting for the presidential primary. So, today was the last day to register to vote for the presidential primary. Town Hall was open till late 8:00 tonight. Early voting for the presidential primary will be held on Monday, February 24 through Friday, February 28. Monday to Friday, Monday to Thursday, Monday to Wednesday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. They have extended hours on Thursday, February 27, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and normal Town Hall hours on Friday, the 28th, from 8:00 AM to 1:30 in the Carol Blute Room in the cellar of Town Hall. On Monday, Assistant Town Planner Allison Quinn was delivered two 40B proposals from Conspre, Comprehensive Land Holdings. One is a proposed 132-unit building at 648 Canton Avenue. The other is a 120-unit building at 582 Blue Hill Ave. So, this board, I talked to Mike Busby at Mass Housing yesterday. Himself and another coworker will be reviewing those documents, and letters should be sent to me tomorrow or Friday. So, the clock will then start ticking on.
So, the 30-day clock will tick. So, that means at our next meeting on the 26th, we should have, part of that should be a public meeting on those to solicit comments. And then on that date also, we haven't, because we just heard about it, we couldn't include it on this agenda, but we should consider engaging the consultant, perhaps Judy Barrett, on the same...
On the same project, on the same issue?
Same issue. Same issue. So, sorry to interrupt.
Nope, that's it. So, I just wanted to put that on the table. It came in late Monday, and it's been a fast-moving current since then. Lastly, and because I know it's getting late, congratulations are in order for three Milton residents. Northeastern men's hockey team won their third straight Beanpot. Coach Jim Madigan is a Milton resident, as well as Captain Ryan Shea and freshman forward Aiden McDonough. So, congratulations.
Great, great.
The Beanpot stays in Milton.
Just a quick question on, to the point, should we give Judy a heads-up? Does she even know these came in? Maybe we should give her a heads-up now, so she knows them.
Yes, yes.
She knows?
Yeah, well, no, but we will. And we just need to, we'll need to get the board to sign off on it, but we can give her the heads-up on it, you know, before we officially engage her. All right. The Chair's report. A lot of things have happened since January 22. It's late. I will go through it very quickly. Most importantly, we had the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting, and it was a very good event, very useful and educational, and there was also a meeting in the Massachusetts Select Board Association, and our own Katie Conlin has been elected as president of the Massachusetts Select Boards Association for 2020, which is great for us, great for Milton, and quite an accomplishment.
What does it say?
Great for the Commonwealth, no saying.
Great for the Commonwealth.
Your picture was already, I saw your picture on a publication yesterday, either signing something or voting it. Did you already have a meeting already?
We had, we had a, the monthly meeting yesterday.
Yeah, your picture, your picture was in some publication yesterday, I saw it.
And hopefully many more. Many more pictures and publications.
I don't think we need more pictures anyway. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Katie.
And thank you.
Should be very interesting.
All right. The Teen Center opening on February 2, Saturday, we had a very well-attended, very vibrant opening, grand opening of the Teen Center. All of our local elected officials, Senator Timblety, Representatives Driscoll and Cullenane were there, and there were a lot of kids, and a lot, and the Youth Task Force was out in force, and it was a great event, and hopefully will inspire more and more children to take advantage of that. Last week, actually perhaps it was the week before, on Monday, the 28th, with the, Senator Timblety convened a meeting at the MBTA, with the General Manager of the MBTA, and invited Mr. Dennehy and myself to meet with the General Manager of the MBTA, Mr. Poftak, and it was a very good exchange. We pushed for more buses. We pushed for trolley service, auto and bike parking, and we showed him these pictures of the Milton Station. And I think it's fair to say that he was quite taken with that, and that he expressed his commitment to try to see what he could do on that, to try to get it done. I wouldn't, commitment's probably too strong a word, but he said he was going to try to see what he could do to get that taken care of. So, hopefully, that will happen. So, yeah, thank you to Senator Timblety for convening that meeting. On January 30, there was presentation by the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition at BID Milton about their recent survey results, and they also announced the awards that they have won. The Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition continues to be a force in our community. They are doing great work. They are being recognized nationally. They were just recently recognized nationally in Washington for their work. I'm not going to, I don't remember the acronym for the organization that recognized them, but it's a national organization, and so they continue to do great work. This meeting on the 30th was a recognizing the new survey results. They were publishing the new survey results to the community and also recognizing their five-year, five-year anniversary. So, thank you to their continuing efforts. Municipal Vulnerability Listening Session is going to be on February 13, 2020, here at the Council of Age, Council on Aging, at 6:30 PM. One more prior thing on...
That's Thursday. That's Thursday?
Tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow night here. It's tomorrow, yes. It's tomorrow, and it's going to be tomorrow very soon, if we don't get going.
Put together by?
Oh, Hillary Waite.
Our former town environmental coordinator.
I'll be there before I have to go.
On Monday, Senator Timblety sponsored an event with Homebase, and retired Brigadier General Jack Hammond invited members of the various communities to talk about Homebase, which is a organization funded by the Red Sox Foundation and Mass General Hospital. They provide veteran and family care, and this was a roundtable on suicide prevention for...
First responders.
For veterans, for veterans and first responders. And it was a, it was a very well-attended and informative and great event, and, you know, our hope is to try to bring some of those people to Milton at some time in the future, to have an event for, specifically for our veterans here. So, again, thank you to Senator Timblety for that. Sorry, I'm going on. One last thing. Happy birthday to the champ, Sean McCarthy, this Saturday, February 15. Make sure to say happy birthday to the champ, and thank you for another notebook.
Not quite 50.
Not quite. That's right. Always 39.
Oh, when he was 15.
All right. So, that's, sorry for that, the extended report, but that's all I have. Members, Ms. Collins?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Farrington?
Nothing yet.
Ms. Conlin?
I just wanted to make two thank yous. One is, last night, the Master Plan Implementation Committee had an interesting meeting right here in this room with about 15 or so kids. I think they were high schoolers and middle schoolers, but there were a few high schoolers. And it was regarding the town center, Civic area, and Vice Chair Collins attended, as well as the members of the committee. And so, I wanted to thank Margaret Carols and the group that brought, arranged for the students to be there, and they gave a lot of good input. They had some questions, and they looked at the maps, and they gave us some nice suggestions for things to consider for the area. And the second one is, I wanted to thank Assistant Superintendent Glenn Pavlicek for providing me with a lot of good information about Chapter 70 and Milton's school budget for an MMA meeting that I was at yesterday, where we were thanking the Lieutenant Governor and members of the administration for the increased Chapter 70A to communities like ours that have increasing enrollment, but, you know, a lot of communities don't have that situation. If they are declining our static enrollment, they did not get the increase that we had. So, we were discussing that with the members of the administration, and Assistant Superintendent